This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
... day, uh, March 5th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time, uh, or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Hey, Connie, here, Connie Denham. Here. Salem. I know, I know. Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jodzik.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom P.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Jerome.
Here.
Okay, and we're gonna do a short moment of silence. And we are going to, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work towards it.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes that we need to, uh, act on. We have February 19th and the 26th special meeting. Um, I would like to take motions for those separately if we could. I would entertain a motion for the February 19th meeting.
Moved.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Salem and Rose. Well, Peg.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Duh. Anybody else?
Good vote.
I think that was everybody, yes. No, no nays. Uh, and, um, also, the, uh, special meeting of the 26th, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And we have an abstention. Motion passes. Um, this is the opportunity for, uh, members of the public to address the council. Uh, we just ask that you state your, uh, name and address for the record and address the council, and you have three minutes. So if you would like to speak, please step to the podium. Um, and if you're online, just raise your virtual hand, so I know that you would like to speak. Yeah, thanks.
Hi, I've never, never been here before, so this is kind of exciting. Uh, my name is Roxanne, uh, Mariani Proll, uh, but my friends call me Rocky, so you may do so as well. Uh, I live at 90 Maple. Good evening, city council members. I guess the mayor's not here. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Rocky, I already told you that. And I am here to express my strong support for an ordinance that allows short-term rentals in our community. Short-term rentals provide significant benefits to our city. They stimulate the local economy by attracting visitors who spend money at local businesses, restaurants, and attractions, but, you know, mostly the restaurants and businesses. Homeowner, homeowners can earn extra income, which helps with mortgage payments, property maintenance, and overall financial stability. Additionally, short-term rentals create opportunities for tourism growth, which can lead to increased tax revenue for important city services such as infrastructure, schools, and public safety. While we recognize the need for affordable housing in our community, allowing women and seniors to list their properties as short-term rentals provides them with a viable means of financial support, effectively creating affordable housing opportunities for this demographic. In case you haven't noticed, I fit within that demographic. Um, by enabling these homeowners to generate supplemental income, they can afford to stay in their homes rather than being forced to sell or relocate due to rising living costs. Some may be concerned about potential disruptions, but we can craft regulations that ensure responsible hosting. Common sense guidelines such as requiring permits, implementing noise ordinances, and setting occupancy limits will help preserve neighborhood integrity while allowing homeowners to participate in this growing sector. Many cities of our size have successfully implemented short-term rental regulations that balance economic growth with community interests. We have the opportunity to do the same. I urge you to consider the ordinance. I did see what the, the brief that you guys have, and it looks really amazing, it looks great, um, as a means of fostering economic development, supporting homeowners, and enhancing our city's appeal to visitors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
James Kuzinski, 47 Hannem Brook Drive, East Hampton, Mass. I come to you today with a very heavy feeling, right here. And that's because although I just pledged to the United States of America, I'm not sure where we live. I live in the United States of America. As the current administration continues to align itself with the world's most dangerous dictator, we're told that Russia did not invade the Ukraine. Two years ago, we were told that 100,000 Russian troops gathered just to perform exercises on the border of Ukraine. We saw those troops indeed invade Ukraine. But we're told by our leaders that that's not what happened. We're told that the Russians didn't invade Ukraine. I believe in our forest service, our parks, our aid to, around the world. I believe in supporting our veterans. I believe in democracy, our constitution. If you still believe in democracy, if you believe in our future, if you believe, then you'll want to participate in a rally that's coming up this weekend in Northampton. I would invite each and every one of you to join me and many others to be held this weekend, Sunday, 12 to 2, at the City Hall in Northampton.
I'm so sorry.
Last time I looked, I lived in the United States of America, not the United States of Putin.
Hello, Lindsay. Mount Tom Avenue, East Hampton, Lindsay Rothschild. Good vibe in here. Um, it's hard to talk after JP because what he said was so important and so pressing, and I will be there. My mom already invited me to the rally, and you'll see me there. And that's a conversation we definitely need to keep having as a community. Um, I'm just coming to talk on the Airbnb issue. Um, I just want to share my experience with Airbnb. I, my mom, when we decided that she was going to purchase a home in East Hampton, we could not find a single family that was affordable for her. And then we tried making some bids on a couple, two families, thinking that would be an option to help supplement her ability to live in East Hampton. After my father passed away, she decided to join me here. Um, and we found a single-family home on, um, Park Street that had just such the layout that I was, went into creative solution mode and said, Mom, if we like, can Airbnb some of these rooms out on the second floor, and I'll help you do it, this will supplement you being able to live in East Hampton. Um, and that's what we've done. So when I got the letter, the season to this letter, I was really panicked because that's like our economic plan to like help my mom live in our house. Airbnb does, um, add affordability, give people options. Um, I also wanted to know, is that three minutes?
Nope.
Okay. Some of the fast, sorry, um, some data points from an Airbnb research that the fastest-growing group of Airbnb hosts in the U.S. is seniors, and the growth is propelled largely by women. Sixty-four percent of those seniors are women. For empty nesters who share their home, Airbnb can economic lifeline. Many senior women are taking a resource that would otherwise be underutilized, facing their home and using it to earn money that helps them make ends meet. Fifty percent of senior hosts say they host for financial reasons and are on a fixed income, and forty-five percent of senior hosts rely on their Airbnb income to make ends meet and spend it on their cost of living, and that is the exact truth for my family. So I just want, you know, it's easy to kind of see as, oh, business, this isn't the Cape. This isn't investors buying out the city and running it out. These are people using their assets to help make living here more affordable. Um, thank you for taking the issue up so quickly, and I appreciate your usually common sense approach to ordinances, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Please step up.
Hi, um, my name is John Santiago. I live at 13 Oliver Street. Um, didn't plan on speaking, but I'm also here, uh, in support of a short-term rental ordinance that benefits everybody. Um, and I wanted to highlight an issue that I know is on a lot of people's minds, um, which is about, you know, what happens with all these quote-unquote random guests that come to town, um, and come into our neighborhoods. But I think it's really important to acknowledge that the dynamics in our town are much different than the dynamics in a vacation destination. As great as our town is, it is not a destination. People don't come here to hang out. Um, and I know in the short time that I've been doing it, the guests that I've had have been small business owners who are coming to East Hampton as part of a small business operation. You know, there's growing tech activity, there's just all sorts of interesting small businesses that you would never think of. They're coming here to work, and they don't have anywhere to stay. Or they're coming here to visit their kids who are at Williston, and they don't have anywhere to stay. Um, or they're coming to visit aging family, they don't have anywhere to stay, or they're coming to visit grandkids, they don't have anywhere to stay. So all of my guests, they're coming to do something or see somebody. They're not coming to hang out. Um, and it's, it's worthwhile to have regulations that, you know, limit noise and, um, avoid kind of a party atmosphere. But Airbnb itself, as a platform, has a lot of built-in protections that limit that sort of thing. Um, and yeah, I'd also like to echo the sentiment that was expressed already, which is that, you know, there are a lot of us who took this on as a way to make ends meet in an increasingly unaffordable, um, world. Um, and, you know, that's, that's why my family is doing it. Um, the last time I looked, there were less than 1% of the entire housing stock. It's like less than 0.8% of the whole housing stock of East Hampton is involved in short-term rentals. Um, it doesn't have anything to do with the housing crisis, but it is helping a lot of people drive the, the kind of economic engine of East Hampton. So I think it's worthwhile to find a way to keep it going in a way that pleases everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else in the room like to speak for a public speaking, please?
I'm here for two reasons. Maybe because I was here in August introducing the, uh...
And if you wouldn't mind just saying your name and address for the record once again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Marvin Ward, and I live right over the street here on Cottage Street, uh, in the old factory. I was here because Nicole and I all be, both believe that we need to have a state, a citywide, three, and we ended just heavenly last week, or not last week, the last meeting, and, but it got put down. And I thought, after I got home, that we had a lot of people giving particular places where 25 is too slow. And I was hoping that the people who are doing this are reeking, making that and keeping it, because, you know, some of them could be for 33, 33, I mean, 30, some can be 35, because it is too small, sore. Uh, and, and I, as I recall, is that, uh, Lance, uh, I mean, names, uh, is that a person? Can I cast the, Lance Lindsay said that for her area, it was the same way. It's too, too slow. And I don't know if anybody has created any kind of group for things for lesser speeds. And it would be a good way to nail it down. And of course, I realize that we would like to have a good, uh, personal, permanent chief, but we don't. But it doesn't have to be done after he's done that. It could be done before, because he may not very well know any of the, anyway. My second thing is that something I went through before, during the...
One minute.
Okay, in, in the, uh, redoing of union, is that I talked with the engineer, Diane, about correcting the segment of the, um, small segment of the sidewalk on the other side of the red, damn. I fell getting on it on the ice last time, and I could not get up until somebody else came and helped me. I have an artificial hip, I'm 83, and I, I just said, you've got to help me and push me, and I'll just push me over until I can get my feet on something that is not ice. But I talked beforehand with Diane, and she said they were going to do it, because it's just, just the understand of the thing. But there's a whole bunch of asphalt of different types, and then there are things that are rotten things, metal things, standing up and tumbling, tumbling, so I want to see why they can't do it now, so that it is, because the people who use that are people who are walking or on, um, car, you know, waltzes or anything. And I, you know, I didn't get hurt. I just couldn't get up.
So, and that's your three minutes?
That's it, I know.
Thank you very much.
I'm ready to say goodbye.
I appreciate that.
But I really was, I'm really encouraged about it, because I, other people tell me about it too. And because I live on that side of the street, I use it all the time.
Thank you. And anybody else from, in the room, like to speak at public speaking? Uh, okay, seeing none, uh, it looks like Jesus. You can unmute yourself.
Do we need to, um...
We start public hearing?
Oh, what, oh, it's, uh, good, good point. This is, it's just one person, so I'm fine with that. Yeah, go ahead.
Should I speak during the public hearing or now?
If, if you're here to speak for the public hearing, then yes, during the public hearing, um, and...
Is that the, the one on the resolution for the school funding?
No.
Uh, no, but we, we, I will ask you to speak at that time. So if you just bear with us.
Oh, okay. All, all, yeah, I'm gonna mute for now then.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, and I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any noes, any abstentions? Okay, public hearing is open. And, um, the first thing we have on the public hearing tonight, uh, and I will take this, as we currently do not have an official chair, um, because we have not met, um, since our last meeting, um, was a request from Parks and Rec and the Parks Commission to, uh, examine the traffic flow going into Nanotuck Park. And I see that we have the Parks Director, John Mason, here, and, um, let me just admit that. Uh, and I think maybe we have some commissioners? Potentially? Okay, perfect. Um, so I'll just give the rundown, and John, you can fill in anything I miss. Um, so this came to us, and it seemed like it was a request of necessity, um, as the traffic pattern going into Nanotuck Park has created some issues historically. Um, and a couple of those issues are, um, with the current traffic pattern, um, which is coming in, um, from, uh, Wilston Ave to the park, uh, and then exiting out, um, through the driveway, and, um, geez, I don't have that. It's, what street is it?
Hisgin, I think.
Is it Hisgin? Okay.
Hisgin.
Um, going out to Hisgin. And that creates a situation where cars coming in are taking a left-hand turn into the park, and cars that are leaving are also taking a left-hand turn out of the park, which is a collision hazard. Um, it also makes the placement of the park's kiosk for collecting fees, um, in a little bit of a difficult spot. It creates a blind spot for cars turning in, um, and it also can create a backup in front of residential properties when there is a backup, which can then limit people that live there from being able to leave their property at busy times. Um, and so the request was for us to take a look at changing the traffic pattern, which would be coming in from Hisgin. Um, cars would be then taking a right into the park, and cars leaving the park would be taking a right out, um, to Wilston Ave, which would then, uh, minimize the, uh, potential for a collision, since they would be going, um, without any interference. Uh, another thing that was noted was that, um, if this traffic pattern change happens, that, uh, cars leaving the park at Wilston would be on the cemetery side of the street leaving, so the traffic would be against a part of the street where there's no residential or sidewalks. Um, so the traffic that way, and then, um, coming in from Hisgin, there's not too many houses on the right-hand side of the street that are facing the street. It's a lot of side yards. So then it would also minimize cars going through and being close to residential, um, properties. Uh, and I think one of the main things for this would allow for power to be placed in the kiosk, um, for the employees of Park and Rec that are collecting the fees, so they could have air conditioning and potentially even heat. Um, and it would also potentially allow for the addition of a credit card reader, um, you know, a card reader that would allow people to pay the fee by credit card. Um, so John, I would ask if you have anything to add to that?
Not much.
Okay, well, that's good. I'll take that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Mason, Parks and Rec. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. When we were looking at this, this past year, and set it to public safety, um, we wanted to make sure it was sent out to our neighbors. Um, so we mailed out postcards regarding this public hearing. Um, we want to be good neighbors to our neighborhood, um, that we're a part of in the park. Um, so you'll probably be hearing input from both sides, um, but, which is great, um, that people have an opinion, but, um, we want to, we want to make sure that everybody was informed in our area. If this project does move forward, there will be a lot of logistics, signage, notifying people, looking at next spring that we would do this, um, you know, contacting GPS mapping services of where the entrance is instead of sending them one way, it's actually the other. So there's a lot of the small details that will be looked at, um, throughout the year, and a lot of, um, public outreach, um, not only to, um, the neighborhood, but all our guests that come into the park. Um, so we haven't printed our one-day passes yet, so if this is approved and before we print our one-day passes, it would be on the one-day passes on the back that, you know, next year, look for a new traffic pattern. Our pavilion rental, same thing. We have all their emails, phone numbers, reaching out to them, letting them know, just so you know, if you rent next year, we'll be looking at this to, you know, try to get a, try to limit the amount of, um, it's been 75 years, uh, that road going that way. So, uh, there's a lot of history. So there'll be, uh, you know, there'll be a lot of education that goes in with that, um, to let folks know. So I just wanted to, um, throw those in there as well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Um, do, any of the, oh, John, we might have some questions for you, so don't go too far. Uh, I think, stay up here, stay up here.
You might want to go.
I stretched out.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Counsel Kuzinski, did you want to?
Hi, there, there certainly seems to be lots of benefits in doing this. Uh, I just had a question about some of the specifics, and, and it had to do, actually, one question right now, and that had to do with imagining the traffic flow coming in from Hisgin down, okay, just to where the booth is, and will there be a no pass through to Wilston at that point, or will the traffic still be allowed to flow?
The traffic would still be allowed to flow into Lowndes and then to Wilston, yes. So there would...
Into the park or through onto Wilston.
Yeah.
So folks would still have to kind of pay attention, the right turners coming out of the park will still have to pay attention to what's coming in this direction. It wouldn't be something like where they, where they go, oh geez, okay, nobody's going to do that, right?
And that's, you know, some of the logistics, putting a stop sign out, so you, you have a...
So it will be a stop there, I, you would envision, and then proceeding.
And the toll booth would be relocated down into the park, about 150 to 175 feet.
Right.
And, and more to the, having it down into the park and having the line being created into the park instead of on the public, um, access road is, is really one of the, the main concerns we want to solve.
Sounds like it would help with a lot of the traffic situations, at least at this point. Thank you.
Yep, and Connie?
Thank you. Um, I'll just be fully transparent ahead of time. I'm not ready to vote yes on this tonight, and I'm, I'm hoping that we'll extend this conversation. Uh, in part specifically, I'm, I'm genuinely concerned about Taft Avenue. I think we're talking about Hisgin, but the reality is, roads have to feed into Hisgin in order to get into the park, right? So that's first. Um, we have a lot of students from Wilston who walk up, um, Hisgin, uh, to get to the park, right, because their, their playing fields are there and things of that nature. Um, the, the Hisgin between, um, Garfield and Ward doesn't have a sidewalk. Um, and students, I'm not sure if you know this, they often just walk right up the middle of the street, right? Um, and sometimes we're kind of with a needle, right, walking through, sometimes I walk on both sides of the street, right? And so we're trying to get up, um, there. But Taft in particular, there's a lot of dog walkers, there's a lot of walkers. Um, there's no sidewalk on Taft at all. Um, I, having spoken to residents there, I think that they would prefer not to have a sidewalk there, because I think they, they appreciate that. But when Wilston is in school and they have a lot of sports, there's traffic on both sides of that street. Um, and so that's of great concern, because people who are coming from the plains are going to drive right down Taft Avenue. So that's a real concern for me, not just because I walk my dog on Taft, but because of that particular, um, situation. And so, um, there's grandkids on that street, there's kids on that street, um, and there's not a, a lot of room for that. I know as drivers, we often, even though we're looking at hopefully having 25 miles an hour, I'm not sure, but we have a tendency of driving a little bit faster, uh, when we're trying to get somewhere, right? And I, I don't think that, um, those particular streets, they already deal a lot with schools, uh, people trying to get to school, uh, and things of that nature. So that's of concern to me, right? Um, so getting to my questions, right? Um, when you say, uh, when you say 150 feet into the park, where, where about, how, what is, where is that exactly, if you could give me? Is that like halfway up to the top of the hill?
Just past, so you have the, the maintenance, our maintenance road, then you have the water department, shore department, DPW access road.
Yep.
Right at, just before, in between those two.
Yep.
Um, and there's, there's grass area that actually can be created to make a, a wider, um, entrance way, to make it two lanes, um, easy enough for the toll booth, and to put the toll booth in the middle. Um, just to follow up on yours, the same amount of cars are going to come into the park as leave the park.
Hmm.
So there's, it's not changing the number that come and go.
Sure.
It's, it's, it's the same. So if they're speeding to leave, the same folks that speed into the park, speed to leave, you know, we deal with it all the time. Um, it's, it's, as Marvin would say, there's a, there's a, there's an issue with speeds in, in town for sure, and, and we deal with it a lot with the park.
No, yeah, I know, I'm fully aware. The difference is, if they come into that park, right, if they come into the park the way that they're coming in now, um, there's a lot of people who actually leave that way. So the people who, some of the people who come in from that direction actually skirt and go out that, even though I think they're supposed to turn left, I think they still turn right and go to that side of...
And I'm not, I'm not naive, we're thinking that people aren't going to do that from Wilson and Lowndes either.
Yeah, yeah. So here's my question, a couple of other questions that I have. One, did you explore what it would look like if you put the, um, if you put the toll booth, we'll call it toll booth, at the top of the hill, because you go down and you kind of come up. So then at the, the turn, right, there's the park that sits right there at the top, and then there's Sheehan Field across there. Did you explore the booth being there? Because you can actually cut into that space right there that's to the right, which would allow, one, it would allow the same type of long kind of line that could, that could come down, um, which would, I think, do what you're trying to do. There's also space there that you could create, uh, a pass lane that would go off to the right there, but it would, it would reduce, uh, it would, it would change... But it would, it would reduce uh, it would, it would change the pattern, right? Or we keep the pattern.
It'd keep the pattern the same currently. We'd still have the exiting and entering cross-traffic pattern at the top of the hill. It wouldn't solve that.
Right. Um, but there would be stop signs, right? We talked about there could be stop signs that people would have to.
There, there's stop signs currently there at the booth.
Okay, and so here at the bottom, next to the, the uh basketball courts, there's parking right there, correct?
There's parking on Daily Field Road at the basketball courts.
Yeah, at the basketball courts. So if traffic is coming in this way, those, if there's a line there, those people parking are going to have to try to back out into that line of traffic, correct?
We're only anticipating lines in the morning, so I don't think there's going to be any cars getting there at eight o'clock to play basketball and leave at ten after eight. I would think you, if you're coming to play basketball, you're probably going to be there for a little bit of a duration. This is really, the idea of to relieve the traffic flow is the Saturday and Sunday mornings when, when folks have ten soccer games at eight o'clock or Little League and softball. Pickleball wants to get in, Pavilion Rentals, you know, it's, after that, those hours, there's really no backup. Um, you know, occasionally if a big event happens where they're all coming at once, but it's sporadic after that. It's, it's, it's hammering those first early hours.
Right, and is there, is there baseball playing at Daily Field that early in the morning?
No, they usually start around nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
That's most of my questions for now.
Did someone over here have a question? Council Smith?
I just, my, my question is simple by comparison. Right now, there's a draw, the bar that goes across the road with a different pa- uh pattern. Would that still come down when the park is closed?
So we would want to, if we went forward with this, we would want to keep the, those gates open year-round. And, and, and still just have the, the brown gate in the park would be the one that would be closed off, but to keep those, those year-round. Because we also have, we're looking at putting a gate at the access road behind the tennis courts where Park and Rec and DPW and Water and Sewer have to get in because they have to monitor the wells um down there, that they would have access. So maintaining that road. You know, the other thing is when people come now to our park office, they drive in to see our park office and for them to go back to the park, they have to go one way, the wrong way, or go all the way around the neighborhoods and come back in. Um, so, you know, for people that want to stop, pay for a Pavilion picnic site, do whatever, they can stop in and then continue on their way into the park.
I think, and one of the things that we talked about in committee was that if this traffic pattern change happens, then the traffic would be coming into the park past the Park and Rec offices. So that would be another, you know, kind of set of eyes of what's coming into the park. Um, and, and, you know, for safety again, and I think the whole reason this was brought up was around safety. Because I, I think what you said was correct. If a car comes in, a car goes out. So there's going to be no discernible traffic change other than the direction that that car is going. That car will still be coming in or out, it's just the direction it's going. So you're not really changing anything other than the direction of the cars' travel.
And the timing, you know, so from four, four o'clock, four to six, say, on the, on the weekdays, when um baseball, soccer, whether high school has a game, that, that line, they're lined up, they're one by one by my office, you know, non-stop. I mean, I can't even pull out of my parking lot, getting out of my office because the cars are going one by one. It's just that it's changing the time of the effect on the neighborhoods.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do, do you have any of the park commissioners, do you know, if they'd like to talk?
Uh, you, I can't see that far.
Carolyn? Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead, Carolyn.
I think Desiree's supposed to be here too.
Thanks, John. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Uh, hi, thank you for the time to talk about this. And John, thanks for all that detail. The only thing I wanted to add, I, I think to echo what John said, I, I appreciate the concerns about the traffic patterns on the two different roads. And it is the same number of cars going in and out that exists now. They come in, they have to leave. Um, the one thing that I know, and this was still something we were working on, but one of the delays that happens with people who have passes and people who are paying. So John mentioned, or um one of the commissioners, or one of the um committee members mentioned the possibility of using some kind of electronic payment system. I think the additional possibility would be during busy times if we had the staffing to allow people with passes to go through in a more timely manner. And that would also decrease the wait times and the lines that might form.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and it looks like we have, is that East Hampton Basketball? Oh, okay.
Sorry, it's Desiree, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
I don't know why it's under EBA. I was supposed to be there last week, and I currently have a basketball game, so I was unable to send a person. But, I mean, echoing everything that Ben said, there's still going to be headaches that we need to address with the speeding and the number of people in and out and maybe to, working with the programs to adjust timing and stuff like that. But it's really just trying to, you know, get that entrance inside the park and then let's still worry about the headaches. I mean, we're still going to have the Williston kids walking even along the road, which maybe we need to address as well, the Williston, that we look to have put in some sort of walking lane or, you know, some sort of sidewalks to help with the movement of them. But um definitely according to everything that has been said, again, there's certainly things we still have to work on. But I think the main focus is just trying to get that switch to allow for more room for cars to line up and a better flow of traffic.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so anybody else from the council or the parks? I guess we would open it up to uh public. Anybody have just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and um.
Okay, Marie Ferraro, forty-eight Bryan Ave., inherited, he's Hamptoned. First of all, I want to thank Council Denham for bringing up the concern about the congestion on Hisgin Ave. Um, just to address it very quickly, you have um virtually one direction of traffic coming into the park currently, as we all know, from Williston to Lounes. And let's talk about the cross-traffic, and that's really where the issue is. Um, if you change the traffic pattern, you're talking about Hisgin. However, you're not really recognizing that to get to Hisdi- Hisgin, you have Taft, Garfield in two directions, you've got people cutting in through the high school, and you have Bryan Ave. This area is already very heavily congested with traffic from the high school itself, which changed dramatically when the high school was moved from its former location, where the parking lot is, to where it is now, which used to be the Grove of Trees. So that made Bryan Ave a central avenue for the high school. School buses, delivery trucks, obviously parents and children, okay? So you've already got a very congested area. Now you have four to five streets converging at that Hisgin entrance near the stone building. And you're going to have worse backup than you already have on Lounes. To say that there are seven houses on Lounes that are impacted, that can't get out of their driveway, while Bryan Ave and Hisgin Ave have had problems getting out of their driveway since the high school was moved. So that's just par for the course right now. I think it's a great idea to come up to a different solution for that cross-traffic. Is it perhaps that Lounes Ave should be one-way coming into the park and that Hisgin remains an exit for that park? The tr- the pedestrian traffic in that area on Hisgin is phenomenal. I live there and I see children on bicycles from three and four years old. They're on the sidewalk, they're on the street, innumerable dog walkers. The Williston sports teams, as mentioned. And you're going to tell teenagers at Williston, sure, just use the sidewalk. Well, good luck. And again, I haven't been there for seventy-five years, but I have noticed a change in the congestion, pedestrian and car traffic in the fifteen years that I've been there. And yes, we're trying to remove, move away from this car-centric center of town. And by move, changing this traffic pattern the way it's been suggested, I don't think it really helps that area. It already is very heavily congested with traffic. And I applaud the use of a bike path, the encouragement of people walking and all of that. It's a wonderful use of the park and the facilities. And I do like the schematic that Mr. Mason was kind enough to send to me that showed two-way traffic within the park itself. And I think moving the kiosk is another great solution. And I think it would also be helpful, as you mentioned, to eventually electrify that little toll booth, you know, from nineteen-hundred. And um maybe have, have, like you said, have people reserve things online instead of calling the office. Once they reserve a Pavilion or what have you online or buy a pass, why aren't they giving a QR code? Like some of the very busy garages and in the cities. Boston has it, Springfield all over the place. So I think modernizing the kiosk is a helpful solution to expedite the traffic. And lastly, I want to mention the same amount of cars going in as going out. Yes, technically that is accurate. However, when you go to a sporting event or an event that you've been invited to at a Pavilion, you're converging at the same time. However, your exit is intermittent. And I live there and on the weekends, I know exactly what that difference is. They leave the park intermittently, but they do arrive simultaneously. And that's the congestion that you currently have. So I don't want to see that same congestion transferred to Hisgin. And basically, that's plenty to say about it. And I thank you all for your time.
Anybody else? You know the drill.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Jeff Bag. I live at forty-nine Taft Ave. with my wife, Megan. Um, I did want to thank Dr. Mason for sending the Butters notification. It's extremely helpful for this kind of discussion, so that's really appreciated. Um, Megan and I just wanted to urge the city council to wait to approve this change until additional information is provided and considered. Things like options to install speed tables on Taft Avenue and possibly other streets, and a detailed sign plan for ensuring that visitors will be able to find the park. Since this was described at the past, the past couple of Parks, Parks Commission meetings as kind of an easy or short-money project, perhaps the effort could be considered temporary and explored as a trial run. Some things that um have come up at the past couple of meetings that we were, that we were able to listen to um were that this will greatly improve safety and will reduce the impact to residents on Lounes. Unfortunately, we see this as merely shifting the impacts to residents of Taft Ave., Hisgin, and Garfield Ave. for minimal gain. The safety concern of crossing traffic at the entrance seems to be low, given that the intersection is a two-way stop and vehicles are traveling very slow as they exit. The line of cars on Lounes on the weekend could be eliminated by moving the toll booth into the park. Um, we've heard that the increase will, um, we heard that this change will not increase the number of cars entering the park. But as residents of Taft Avenue, it'll represent a significant increase in the cars traveling down the road that we live on to enter the park. Um, please consider that the proposed, the proposal sounds minor, but the impacts are spread out beyond the park boundaries. And I know that the council has a pretty narrow uh vote ahead of you to change the directional flow of one street. But the impacts are, are spread out amongst this entire neighborhood. The characteristics of road, of a road needs to be factored and considered. Data shows that a wide roadway allows drivers to drive faster, more easily. Um, the care, and looking at Williston Ave., which is a straight and flat road with a big curve onto Lounes, automatically slows traffic. And the remainder of Lounes is very narrow and it's difficult to go fast on. Taft Ave., on the other hand, is extremely wide, which makes it easier for drivers to go fast. And unlike Williston Ave., Taft has a long gradual downhill slope, which will further increase the likelihood of high vehicle speeds. Um, Taft Ave. has no lane markings, um, no, no painted lines and no speed limit signs. So we haven't discussed this with our neighbors, but we are asking that the city council not approve the change until the city has, one, evaluated options to install two or three temporary speed tables on Taft, like the one that's on Greenwood Court. Um, two, we would like to confirm the ability to install twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign on Taft Ave. And confirm that the police department would be willing to install a your-speed radar sign. Uh, my understanding is that without a speed limit sign, they can't, they can't post those your-speed limit signs. And then three, the pro- uh provide a sign plan with details on the location, size, and type of signs that will be used to get people off Park Street, down Taft, and also off Williston Ave., onto Garfield, and onto Hisgin. I think, I think the city council has an opportunity to understand what kind of signs would be used and where they would be located before you make this decision. And then the last one would be, if approved and implemented, just a method to track and monitor the effectiveness of the speed tables and a way to track complaints and issues with an opportunity to review after a year. Um, the city council should be diligent in considering the seemingly minor requests that will have a big impact on neighborhoods around the park. It seems like the impacts are not being resolved by, they're, they're, they're not being resolved, they're being relocated. The city council needs to be sure to consider that this is about, this is not just about East Hampton residents. It's also about buses uh from East Hampton, buses from other towns, parents of visiting sports teams, family members of sports teams, pickleball players, the future dog park people, all accessing the park in a different way than has been done in the past seventy-five years. So while it sounds like a minor vote, it has a big impact and we're hoping to consider the broader impacts. Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak? Please step to the podium.
Hi, um, my name's Catherine Hancock. I live at Fort Taft, which, excuse me, is at the top of the hill. Um, and as you're going out of the park, it'd be on the left side. And I also have a neighbor um who's on Park Street. Both of our driveways are about maybe thirty to forty feet from the corner. And half of the town is going to be coming from Park Street and turning right to race down Taft Avenue. And there's a wall there. I don't know if any of you have probably not noticed it, but um as you go around that corner, that house has a fairly large wall. So it's, basically, it's a blind corner. Um, there's also going to be a bike trail there that's coming soon. So you're going to have people racing around a blind corner, across a bike path. And then you've got two driveways that are really close. As it is right now, when I back out of my driveway, there's a lot of, you know, cars that have to sort of slam on their brakes because they don't, they don't see that I'm there. So I think that's a, a factor that needs to be considered. Um, and also people do speed, I mean, either way they speed, but I feel like um it's, it's something that needs to be addressed regardless because of the use on Taft Avenue. Um, the Williston kids, um, Hisgin is just always going to have kids walking down the middle of that street. Williston tries really hard, they, I mean, every Tuesday, they have a meeting and they talk to the kids about safety on Park Street, on Hisgin, don't do this. The kids are just, they're going to do what they're going to do. So I don't think you can count on a lot of changes coming from that piece of it. Um, and the other thing is that intersection, Hisgin and Bryan, is horrible. Um, there's like bushes that block, you can't see. There's a stop sign on Bryan, but not on Hisgin. And I think there's a huge problem with traffic going there and potential for a lot of accidents. There already been accidents there. Um, there's also been accidents on Taft and Park Street as well. I think that's it. Okay, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
All right, feel free to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Bob Graham from twenty Taft Avenue, adjacent to Williston Academy parking lot and the summer, summer soccer programs and sports programs that we have to deal with on a daily basis and a nightly basis. Um, I think we need some feasibility studies before we make a vote here. Back when I was a kid, a long time ago, not seventy-five years ago, but sixty-six years ago, they put a toll booth at the top of the hill going into Nantucket Park. They did that primarily for one reason, Proposition Two and a Half. It killed the recreation department, really did. It did away with everything. We had to charge for picnic sites. When I was a boy, we never charged a thing. We used to ride our bikes up to Daily Field and that's where we learned how to play soccer, behind the old high school. Yadi Bagadi, the recreation director, would throw a bunch of balls out there and he'd say, "Have fun, boys. Go up with his cup of coffee, smoke his cigarettes, and do his racing for him." God's honest truth. But I think we really got to be concerned about Taft Ave and Kathy hit the nail right on the head. I'm not opposed to charging fees. We have to for the park department to survive. That's an issue that's not going to go away. But safety is my main concern. Everybody, when that high school leaves at the end of the day, we've got kids racing each other from Bryan to Taft to see who can get to Park Street first. I have jumped out in the road numerous times and actually followed somebody with my hearse, racing to school after I've told them to stop and slow down on a daily basis. And I've even gone to the police department and suggested we do something about this. I drove my hearse van and pulled in front of this young man. He had his girlfriend with him. And I asked him to roll down the window. I did not accost him. I just asked him to roll down his window. And I said to him, "Can you read what it says on my vehicle?" Funeral home. I says, "The last thing I want to do, young man, is be meeting your parents or this young lady's parents in my funeral home because you wrapped yourself around a tree trying to get someplace in a hurry. There is nothing that important." But we are talking about safety and you cannot, you cannot use Hiskin or, or Bryan Ave or Taft Ave to do this. We got parents coming in now that come flying down the street, take a left, go onto the right into, on Bryan, and shoot through the parking lot to get their kids to practice on time. It's not going to slow it down. And I think a feasibility study is definitely in order here. And I think that we really have to have some speed humps on Bryan and Hiskin and Taft Ave to slow the traffic down. Someone is going to get killed. And if we don't do something as leaders and speak up, and I usually don't come to these public hearings, but this is a real safety concern that we have to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in here like to speak before I go to people online? Okay, it looks like we have a couple people. So I'm just going to go with the one I see first, which is Daniel. Zadonik.
Hi, Dan Zadonik. I live on Taft Ave. I've been there for thirty-plus years. It seems like I might be in the minority here, but I support this change.
Okay.
The cars that come out of the park at night fly out of there. Sometimes when there's sporting events, there, there could be up to a hundred cars leaving there. I've seen them exit the park and on Hiskin, take a, a right onto the dead end of Taft Ave just to turn around and not know where they're going. It would be much easier, I think, if cars were going in that way. Just to, to clarify a few points that people made. Williston's school year ends at the beginning of May. The park, I don't believe, opens until the middle of, of April. So you're talking about two weeks that there would be an impact. And then in the fall. I think that it would be, it's, living on Taft, it's a lot easier to pull onto Taft from Park Street than it is to pull off of Taft onto Park. And most of the people that come out of the park take a right, take a left onto Taft Ave and just fly down to Park Street. I, I support this. I don't have a problem with pushing the vote off until the summer or even in the fall if you're going to do a feasibility study. One thing I would recommend that you do before the park opens is making Hiskin and Taft a four-way stop, not a two-way stop. So the cars exiting the park have to stop and cars coming up Hiskin would have to stop as well. I think that would make it a lot safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and it looks like the next one is Karina.
Thank you. Karina Schrendgast. I live at fifteen Lounges Avenue. The park entrance booth is, or kiosk is placed in the street directly across from my house. So I have witnessed the impact of the location of the entrance to the park and the direction the traffic has rooted for over twenty years. The current configuration causes a lot of confusion and it absolutely is dangerous, the cross-traffic. On a daily basis, when, when it's busy, I witness cars confused about which direction. Lots of people turn right. They can't see around the kiosk. And it's dangerous not only to individuals who are driving, but it's dangerous to pedestrians. It's dangerous to children, to students, to people who are walking their dogs. The backup of cars idling is extremely disruptive to residents on Lounges and on Williston. If you change the direction, the backup of cars is going to be inside of the park. The, the backup of cars, as well as the location of the kiosk, impacts access to my driveway. So I support changing the flow of traffic and moving the kiosk. If you're not agreeable to changing the flow of traffic at this time because you want further time to consider it, I would ask that you, at, at a minimum, consider approving moving the kiosk into the park as it sounds, as though no one has objected to that change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next would be Nicole Jay.
Hi, I'm a resident on Williston and recently had a baby. And it sounds like safety is a concern for people who live on both sides of the park. I really don't have a strong preference either way, except when it comes to speeding, which people have brought up numerous times, which people are speeding up and down Williston as well. The speed limit's actually thirty-five, which feels very high for a school zone. And I think the issue is more implementing speed tables and a lower speed limit, whether the direction of the park is reversed or whether it stays the same, to create a safer environment for pedestrians and drivers as well, especially children, since it's mostly children that are using this park and parents walking over with young children and strollers. I think we really need to implement speed bumps on Williston as well as a reduced speed limit there.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like we have someone whose name not available.
Hi, sorry, I don't know why my name's not available. My name's Emily Billa Duke. I live on seven Lounges. I've lived here for eleven years. And I support the idea of switching the traffic pattern. I just wanted to add a concern that I've had since I've lived here is that if changing, I think changing the visibility would actually help. The small playground is not visible if you're driving up from Lounges. And cars will drive really fast down Lounges and there's little kids playing there. And if the traffic pattern was coming from the other direction, you would be able to see the small playground very easily. And you'd also be able to park easier. I don't, I just really like the idea, so I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this topic? Actually, hold on one second. I'm, I'm going to take people that haven't spoken yet first. Okay, Jay Paul.
Hi, Gilio, yes.
Yeah.
My name's Paul Gilio. I live at one oh-three East Street in East Hampton. And I'm a member of the East Hampton U Soccer Board. And, you know, we definitely, I feel like the suggestion of moving the kiosk further into the park is, is very necessary, especially, as was mentioned earlier, on the weekends when a lot of that traffic backs up. People are kind of confused, I think, sometimes as to whether they have to pay or not. And so certainly adding some modernization, we really fully support that so that there's a, there's a pass-through lane for people that already have passes. Perhaps some sort of electronic payment would probably also speed things up. So definitely very much in support of that. And in general, I think all the concerns that were raised about speeding and traffic patterns are, are valid. It does seem to make sense to be able to have right turns as opposed to competing left turns for people entering and exiting at those busy times. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's anybody else that would like to speak before we close public speak, if you want to. Yep, you can.
So once again, Marie Ferraro, speaking from Bryan Ave. Mr. Zadonik mentioned that the Williston curriculum ends in May. He may not be aware that they have a very intensive summer sports program that I believe starts early June and carries right through the summer. Tennis, soccer, you name it. So the, the traffic and the pedestrian traffic is just the same as in the, during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this, yeah, Council Kuzinski and then Council Riley.
Before we close, I wondered if I might ask someone a question in the audience. Because of his planning, former planner status.
I think, I, I won't object to that this time. I think it's not common practice, but I.
I was wondering if Mr. Bag could come to the podium if you wouldn't mind. As a former city planner, I would ask you to maybe put that hat on just for a moment, only a second.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You don't, you don't have to do any of this.
I'm curious.
It had to do with, with your suggestions and other suggestions of speed tables. Is there such, I, I, such a thing as a portable speed table?
Yes.
Or a rentable speed table that you have any, had any experience with? And are they expensive?
I am probably not equipped to answer those questions, but there's one that's been implemented on Greenwood Court. So I think it's done by DPW, so it's probably a DPW question.
Something, okay, yeah, I, I appreciate that. No, I think, I think we're good. Appreciate it. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I, I appreciate your indulgence.
Do you have any other? Okay, Council Riley.
Yeah, so, I mean, look, obviously, I'm a strong supporter of good governance and the request for things like feasibility studies or taking a look at other traffic mitigation patterns, I think is fair as a request. I was prepared to vote yes on this tonight. And the only reason why is because at the committee level, I have been working on this policy topic for five months. And it is a little frustrating that all of the things that we've heard from people tonight, nobody came to any of our meetings to talk about this. And, and it's fine. The public hearing is, is absolutely a time to have these kinds of conversations as well. The challenge being is that we spent five months working with the Parks and Rec Commissioners and the Parks and Rec Department and the city council to talk about these things. And now we have five months that we've lost on a policy solution because nobody came to talk to us about the things that you've talked about tonight.
Well, it's okay, excuse me.
So.
We'll just hold our comments unless you have something further to say and then I'll invite you to the podium.
So with, with that said, I would just ask that if the city council moves this back to the Public Safety Committee, that you come to the meetings and talk to us about these things and stay engaged. Because now what we're talking about is a policy solution that's going to have to wait until next year. Because we can't do all of these types of changes in the middle of the winter. So that's, that's the only frustration that I have is that I wish that you all had shared these things with us over the last five months. But I am happy to send it back to committee if that's what the council wishes.
Council Coniff.
So admittedly, I have not been in the meetings that have been going on since this is my first meeting. But I, I am a person who goes toward the easy before we go toward the difficult. And I think John mentioned it, some other folks have mentioned it here, that step one might be to just move the toll booth. And that may mitigate the lines. That may mitigate traffic in the neighborhoods. And we may have solved a problem. We don't know. But I think, absent and listening to what all of you folks have said tonight, it makes sense. I haven't heard the rest of it, so I admit that I'm only getting half the story. But to me, it feels like, you know, everyone universally believes that moving the toll booth will help. So my belief is let's not, let's not get a Cadillac when we can do just fine with, I won't disparage any other car. But we can do just fine with something else. And that feels more, more easy? It feels easier and you can still get the electricity in it. You can still talk about the, the electronic payment. You can still do all of those things which will mitigate the lines. And at the end of the day, in a year or a season, we go through this and it's still a nightmare. Then we need to come back to the table and have a conversation about we need to do more. Because right now, it just feels to me like we could do something really simple, quickly, probably not terribly expensive, including the, the speed tables, and see where that gets us. Those are my two cents.
Thank you. Council Peak.
I actually have a very similar comment, but I wanted to phrase it as a question to Mr. Mason, if that's okay.
Oh, sure, please.
But only if you want to.
So it seems like, just hearing everything here, there's kind of, I, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. There, there's, what you're, the proposal that you're laying out really kind of has two components. And one of the components is about changing the traffic direction outside of the park. And one of the components is about changing the location of the toll booth and, and adding features and amenities to the toll booth that would be desirable within the park. Is there a reason why the second thing cannot happen without the first thing?
Sure, I'd be glad to answer that. So back well over a year ago, when we had a city, we had two city engineers on staff. I met with them on site to work with me on a design to move the toll booth into the park. The one city engineer left the city, leaving us with only one. With so many projects we, we've had in the city, it was a small side project for our city engineer compared to everything else they've been working on. We've, since the city has hired a second one. I've had conversations with the city engineer. When the weather breaks, they're going to come back down and look at designing the toll booth into the park. So we looked at it a while ago. We're going to be revisiting that, shortage in staffing. So that is something we still wanted to move forward with, notwithstanding this, this part. Secondly, like many of the folks have said, I'm in support of or against it. The speeding is a problem within the neighborhood, within the park. It, it is a concern. It's a concern for park. As people that drop off a child in the park race in to drop off a child. You know, it, it's counterproductive to, to think about it. And, and we put speed bumps in and, and a lot of times it'll turn into jumps, you know, to be quite honest with you. I met with DPW in the fall to discuss the feasibility study, if we wanted to go down that route. We've used them in the city, in the city in the past. We, we've used a, a traffic study group through DPW. And I've been in touch with them that just in case we go down this road, we might be going down this road, so we might be looking for a quote. So we did some of that legwork as well if, you know, because like I said earlier, we want to make sure we're meeting the neighborhood and everybody is going to be happy with whatever resolution that can come out of this. So whatever steps need to be taken on the park staff to meet a resolution, we're, we're more than happy to work with, with all the folks at the table.
That's super helpful. Do you mind if I just, please follow up? So just to confirm though, like, and, and I'm not saying I'm like, I, I think that the, the, the traffic situation is a really interesting situation. There's a lot of perspectives, clearly a complex traffic situation. There's a lot of different perspect, different people coming at this from different angles. And I think that's all, that's all fine and valid. I just wanted to, the, notwithstanding the direction of the traffic, the, the toll booth thing is something we can move forward with. And us, if. And us, if...
We don't have it on our agenda.
We can move forward with this on park property, yes. We being the city, not we being the City Council. Yes. East Hampton can move forward with. And if we were... I don't know. I want to continue talking about this, but if the council were of the decision that we wanted to deliberate on this further or request a study or anything like this, doing so, would it not hold you up on the toll booth thing in any way?
No, the only thing that's gonna be holding potentially something up is after I get designs from city engineer and designing a toll booth entrance where the toll booth can be placed in the middle, looking at the cost, whether how much we can get done in-house or how much we have to outsource. So where you guys would be coming back into play for that part of it would be potential funding up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Don.
Yeah, thank you, Director Mason. I very much appreciate the effort. I know that this was a longer conversation, maybe than was anticipated.
No, I was anticipating a long one.
But I appreciate the dedication of you and the commissioners to address this issue, right? And I fully respect the residents who have been dealing with the entrance of this, right? And I respect the residents and neighbors who have been dealing with the exit issue of this particular situation. But when you think about the potential of moving the booth, the toll booth, you know, can you think about moving it to a couple of different locations so that we can actually see what does that look like if it's here? And what would it look like if it was actually even farther into the...
Then we're gonna be looking at a much higher cost. Currently, where it's being placed, there's power directly above it. That power line actually goes to the DPW. There's no longer power on that line going into the park. It would have to be fed from somewhere much further away and a much longer line. And that is a... Could be a costly proposition. So, I mean, we can look at it, but the easy, simple solution is moving it down about 150 feet. Where there's power right above you, drop a line, you're ready to go, and you can supply power.
My concern with that is that's gonna be a turn, and you're not gonna get many traffic, much traffic around that corner within that 150 feet that's gonna be able to get around. So that's just my observation, kind of opinion, because you're on a turn. But I would appreciate being able to see what it might look like if it was farther in at that particular road change, right? I'm just asking. But I do want to acknowledge the level of concern from everybody that I heard today, the level of frustration that I heard today, particularly from the neighbors who are dealing with these things. And I think it's clear to City Council, we really have a speed issue within the city that we really need to be thinking about. Because, I mean, it really is bad, particularly on, I think, Williston, I think Taft, Bryan, Garfield, Hisgan. I mean, it's really bad. Like Mr. Graham was saying, you know, I've walked out into the middle of the street too and told people to like, slow down, right? I mean, it's really bad. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. So just want to acknowledge that. But it'd be really great to have a couple of different options to see what that would look like.
Okay, and I see that we have Greg Nudelman, who has his hand up. So I would love to give Greg a chance to weigh in on this. And then if you have a question after. Greg, why don't you go ahead and join us?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Nudelman, Director of Public Works for the city. Just listening to the conversation here, I think we have an opportunity kind of approaching us here with the park season getting underway in the next couple of months. And in that opportunity, in that timeframe, you know, we'll have the opportunity to capture traffic counts and speed data for a complete season of the park's operation. And maybe moving the toll booth will fix part of the... Solve some of the challenge. But if we could get a... If we had a year's worth of traffic data, counting which cars were on which street at what time, we could get their average speed. I mean, it's not something DPW could fund, but we do have consultants that could help us with that and really offer a very broad picture into what's happening where and then offer, you know, expert insight into, you know, the reaction that happens if we make a change in one spot or the other. So I think that it's something that... This traffic pattern change is something that the city as a whole really wants to evaluate, to do it properly, looking at the impact on one street from the change on the other is something that really needs to happen. And the chance to do that, start soon to get a full season's worth of data and then, you know, have this conversation with some real reliable information.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Any other thoughts? JT, Council Trump.
I just want to say, I came in here tonight fully expecting to vote in favor of this. But after listening to all the concerns from a lot of the neighbors that I didn't think of prior to hearing them this evening, I want to take pause now, and I think it would be a great idea to revisit this at a later time to give this more thought and maybe look towards a feasibility study or traffic patterns like Greg Nudelman said. And I think whether we decide ultimately to change the traffic pattern or not, I think this brings to light again the problem that has been since the high schools moved. And maybe whether the traffic pattern changes or not, we can do something about the speed on those feeder roads to the high school. Because that obviously has been a problem. It's been a problem since the high school moved. So if nothing else, maybe brought that to light, maybe something could be done with that.
Okay, thanks. Any other thoughts? Council Kuzinski.
Thank you. I just want to say, I came in here leaning towards saying yes. It certainly makes a lot of sense. But wow, there's a lot of good discussion and folks who came to speak. And I'd like to thank Mr. Mason and the Parks Department for getting the word out before the public hearing. Because we need to hear all that type of information in order to make good decisions. So thank you, Mr. Mason, for that effort. What I'm hearing is that you have the authority, or the Parks Department has the authority to move the kiosk, and that may very well be coming for 150-foot, maybe temporary move. You don't have to go through electrical expenses and all sorts of... Get a study to find out about that move to honor it.
No, we'd have to develop the... To be able to put the toll booth in the center, there still has to be construction. There's gonna be documents that need to be put together by the city engineer and then going out to bid to create an entrance point where the toll booth can be in the middle. Traffic can leave the park and enter the park in between that. So they're not waiting on that. So they're... It can happen at some point, hopefully this season, to get the toll booth moved down. But we can't just take the toll booth moving in the middle of the park right now and say it's in the middle. There's not enough room. Yeah, there's not enough room down into the park to do that, or else we would have done it long ago.
Okay. All right, thank you. I also wanted to say that, you know, discussing the one-way and the impact on the neighborhoods, Lounges, and the exit Hisgan, Taft, Bryan, that's all very important because it raises the issue of four-way stop at the intersection of Hisgan and Taft. And that's something that is clearly within the authority of this council to do and within this community to do, if that's going to be helpful. I hope you'll stay tuned to that discussion if we head that way. And I'm not sure that we need to wait for a decision on the entire process to institute a stop at that intersection. The kiosk is being worked on. Speed tables ought to be something that we consider, I think. If it's a danger for the speeds now, just a reminder for folks entering in might be helpful enough to provide enough safety to help prevent an accident. And exit, the same issue, whether the entrance is this way or that way. So I would look into those issues. And I would be amenable to proceeding around this at another time.
Council Coniff.
Just real quick, John, sorry to make you stand up again. But for coming to the council for potentially funding to do the wiring and the moving and the construction and all of that, there is no role for the council for you to make the decision to move the kiosk?
No, no, that's on park property. We can do that on our own.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we'll just... So, yeah, so a couple of things here. I just want to say a final statement before we take an action here is, you know, I consider myself a pragmatist. And, you know, if you look at this and remove yourself from being a property owner in the area affected, which I can realize is difficult to do, the pragmatic thing to do is to fix the traffic pattern. I mean, it's very simple. I mean, the most simple piece of this is if you look at Daly Field Road, which goes from Taft to the park entrance. It's the same distance as the entrance from Lounges to the entrance of the high school. But in that space, there's 11 houses. So if there is a backup on Daly Field Road, not one house is affected by that backup. Not... It would... I mean, I don't think that the backup has ever gotten to the entrance of the high school from the entrance of the park. And maybe it has, but I would say it would be very probably rare for that to spill out onto Hisgan and to Taft. And what I think is really the issue here, and what I'm... From what I'm hearing, is that we have a speeding and, you know, a traffic issue in this neighborhood, which I think is represented across the city. Right now, in public safety, we have, I think, three items around speeding and traffic calming measures, including one from West Street. We have a review of traffic rules and orders for speeding. This is an issue that is 100% affecting the entire city. And it hits us, I think, every time we talk about this. So, you know, obviously, you know, what I would be prepared to do is I would be prepared to, you know, enter an item into public safety where we, alongside the West Street, about looking at putting fog lines on Taft Ave, about narrowing the street, because it is a wide street. And, you know, in conjunction with Hisgan and Bryan and looking at the high school and other potential... So I think that this is something that public safety should be discussing with the neighbors. This is something that we should be trying to solve. Now, it seems like the sentiment is to not move forward with this tonight, even though I think the pragmatic thing to do would be to move forward with this tonight. Because if we are gonna move that kiosk, it makes zero sense to move it where you're gonna have cars crossing in front of each other. It just doesn't make any sense. But that being said, and I must also say, you know, like, I think it has to be acknowledged. I mean, this is my precinct. I'm precinct four. So I'm your city councillor, and you might not like me right now. But I think, you know, the dangerous part of Taft Ave is not turning into Taft Ave. It's turning out of Taft Ave onto Park Street. That's a blind corner, and you kind of have to hold your breath when you pull out of there. So right now, we're asking people to hold their breath when they're leaving the park if they're going from the, you know, the part of town that is going towards Southampton. And turning in there is not that difficult. You know, so... And again, for me, you know, living here for 28 years and frequenting this area a lot, it's six of one, half dozen of another. I mean, it's a car going one way or the other. You still have the same amount of cars going the same speeds. And to me, that's simple. But I get it. I understand. Like, if you were trying to root cars a different way down my street, I would say something too. So I don't have a problem with taking another look at this. But I think it is... There are two separate issues here. You know, and I think that needs to be acknowledged. Like, there is a speeding and traffic issue, one. And then a separate issue is the flow of traffic through here. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I, like, I don't have a horse in this race. So I have no problem bringing this back to public safety and allowing you all to come in, and let's talk about the traffic issues, right? And if we really get down to nuts and bolts, if we address some of these traffic issues, the flow of traffic is probably gonna be a moot point. So I'm hoping that we can get to that point. Because I would love, you know, our Parks and Rec director has come to the table with the Parks and Rec Commission to try to solve a problem that they are living with. And I do, I have to say, I do really feel for the people on Lounges. If you have a line of traffic in front of your house that's stalled, idling, and you can't get out, I think that is the one thing that I wish that we could fix tonight. So, you know, I guess probably the next step here would be to entertain a motion to send this back to property or to public safety. And so we can just take another look at it. But I do feel that this is the right thing to do. So I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Good.
Second.
We have an emotion and a second to send this back to public safety. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And that brings us... Nope, because we still have another one. So this brings us to supplemental appropriations from capital stabilization. Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We also have Brewster Ave, too. Yeah, so I... This one's easy. And so this one is amending the rules, the city ordinances, Appendix A, traffic rules and order, one-way streets, to remove Brewster Ave, the entire distance, and traffic to proceed in the southerly and southeasterly direction. And so I would be happy to entertain any thoughts on this. Does anybody have any thoughts on this one?
I think we said it all.
I think we said it. Would anybody in the audience like to address this particular change? I guess not. Yeah. Anybody online?
I wish to say why.
What is... They're sorry.
That's a good question. And since I was not the chair and I missed that meeting, I'm having a hard time remembering. Oh, Willis. Okay, now I know exactly. I'm sorry, yes. So this was the street that we exchanged Williston for, the rotary in front of Mountain View School. And so we gave them that street for that parcel of land. And now it would, you know, it makes sense for it to be removed because it is no longer a through street, it's just serving Williston as a driveway. So this one makes sense. Sorry, my brain farted.
Do you think we could really do that tonight?
I think we can. I think we got this one. Okay, any further discussion? I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Let's do this.
I move to...
First one.
To amend, oh, sorry, to amend Appendix A, traffic rules and orders, Article Four, one-way streets by removing Brewster Avenue, the entire distance, traffic to proceed in the southerly and southeasterly direction.
Yeah. We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this piece?
I'm just...
Please.
If I could, just for the purpose of the record, this was supported by the Public Safety Committee with a vote of two to zero with your absence, so.
Perfect. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any... Oh, thank you, Con. Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Now we will get to the supplemental appropriations from capital stabilization. Council Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, we've got two of these. One is a lot more complicated than the other. So let's do the complicated one first. It is an appropriation of $106,799 from capital stabilization to purchase a number... Well, actually, that's not exactly true. To lease a large number of hybrid vehicles. So this is part of a... This includes police vehicles. This includes fire vehicles, includes some park vehicles, includes some admin vehicles. I think that the various department heads of the mayor could probably speak to the details if you're curious. But broadly, the idea here philosophically is that cars are not really assets. They're liabilities. The second you purchase them, they lose a lot of their value, and then they break and you have to fix them. And so there's an idea that while leasing cars is not cheap, that what you can do is eventually set up a fleet management system where every year, you lease a number of cars. And then you've leased those cars for a certain number of years. If something happens to them, there's... You deal with that. But if not, that you're leasing those cars for a certain number of years, and you know when you're going to be returning those cars and leasing new cars. And so for the purpose of budgeting, we can get to a place where instead of... Right now, just for the benefit of anyone who's never looked at a municipal budget, I think capital purchases like vehicles are not really part of the budget. They're something that if we run a surplus, which we usually do because we budget very conservatively, the departments can then vie for that money to take some of that surplus, what we call free cash, and to use that to purchase vehicles. And many of them, many of them badly need. And if you don't get that free cash, then you've got to stretch out the lifespan of your vehicles longer, which leads the city to have some hilariously old vehicles. There are vehicles in our fleet right now. There's one that we're going to talk about in a minute that is from 1995. There's one that we're going to talk about in a minute that is from nineteen ninety-five. So that's sort of like, that's kind of the situation where like that this, there's, there's, there's a lot of these things. We, the the idea here is to have, to move towards a leasing model that will give us a lot of more predictability with our fleet management and will also be helpful in dealing with implementing a lot of the goals that we've set out in terms of sustainability and moving towards a hybrid or electric fleet. So we reviewed this last week. The Finance Committee voted to approve it three to zero. I think it's a really, really interesting idea. I think that doing it with a number of, a small number of vehicles, you know, to start and then sort of seeing how it plays out is a really smart idea. I don't know for sure that it is necessarily going to work, but I think it's a really interesting idea. And I think that if it works the way that we're hoping it works, it could potentially be really, really, really helpful for the city's sort of financial management perspective to be able to kind of understand and plan ahead for when leases are expiring and hopefully move us towards getting some of our oldest and least safe and reliable and most fuel-guzzling vehicles off of the road. So that's all I have to say about it. I don't, I'm sure they're representatives of the city.
I'll ask the mayor to come up and and on this, Tom, just quickly before the mayor, this is a mix of hybrid. I think there's a couple electric, right? Is there a couple Blazers that are in on this as well, this one, this round?
Yes, there's one, so we, we were hoping to do, let me back up. This process started about three years ago. We, in, as we were developing the Climate Action Plan, we were working with a startup that we were connected to at MIT that focuses on green solutions for municipalities. And they went through our, our carbon and where, what we could do more quickly than others, and cars came up. So they worked with us to to put together an education plan, but also some deep research. We put out an RFP to Fleet Services that would be interested in working with us. And Enterprise got that bid. From there, Greg Nudelman kind of took over in managing the data that Enterprise needed and pulled in different department heads who had existing requests in for cars as well as cars we knew just needed to go. We, the idea or the the goal was actually to do at least fifty percent all-electric. Two things have prevented us. One, Eversource has had our applications for Level Three charger connections and haven't made a move on those. We're seeing some. Two, there were vehicles that we desperately needed, like police cars, and we didn't have enough choices that were crash-rated, so we reverted to hybrid. Also, ordering any vehicle right now takes a very long time to get it. And and the last time we ordered hybrid vehicles for the police, it was at least six months over what they told us. As far as working or not, Chair Peak captured a lot of the reasons. Yeah, there are questions. We, we have talked to other cities that have done this, both big and small. I mean, what you're coming down to is we very purposely asked for the appropriation to kind of put some daylight on what we're trying to do with the Climate Action Plan and specifically with our vehicles. And then this, this amount of money would go into the budget as a line item under DPW, a highway with the costs, then dispersed to various departments on the back end of it. For basically six hundred thousand dollars, which is a massive number, we're bringing in ten new cars. But we're also getting rid of nineteen ninety-five vehicles, vehicles that that have traffic signs welded on the bottom of them because they're rusted and also repairs. You know, we, the the amount of repairs on what's, what is considered Class One, Two, and Three vehicles is just going through the roof. And the idea was, and then the last big motivator here was market timing. So with free cash being certified in the fall, it's not a great time to buy, say, an all-wheel-drive or an SUV or a plow truck, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So Greg is online to talk about that process, but also Fire and PD are here to talk about the the process frustrations and give a lot of details about where we're going. We are getting, we're getting one EV, I think it's a Blazer, that's crash-rated. DPW is going to to use it, but the idea is the police will have time to try it out. It won't be all geared up. And we will also get more data from other police departments who have used them. And it's, that's kind of like our toe in the water. We do have the charging capacity for the EVs that we've ordered right now. And and then the hybrids need less charging or they're regenerative braking.
I have a quick question for you. A few years ago, we did the Honeywell.
Yep.
And I, I believe that part of that program was to look at outfitting buildings with solar. Is that, where are we in that process? Because it seems like that would be a natural link if we're getting EVs and plug-in hybrids.
So with with Honeywell, we terminated that part of the contract with them because they were really expensive and the management fees just weren't with it. We then went out separately for bid, like we did with the Enterprise, we would do with any other contract because Eversource did grant us the connections for this building and thirty-two. The price of materials to do it were very high and it's small, too small arrays. So we did not get any bids. We got letters of interest if we were going to do more solar at once or the cost of the solar would come down. We'll probably go back out to bid once our new sustainability coordinator takes a good look at what we have. And also other locations, we now might be able to put solar on. The incentives from the state are a little different. And so far, direct pay, which is the direct cash back to municipalities to do that, is is still happening, hasn't been turned off.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Dunn.
Yeah, just one quick comment first. I, I'm not taking it personally, but I'm struggling when Counselor Pete here says that nineteen ninety-five is really, really old. Anyway. I, I, I've thought about something since the last time that we met. And and part of this has to do with kind of our current global financial situation that's a little bit, a little bit shaky, right? So, one, can you, can you or can Assessor Patel, you know, is now the right time to be spending this amount of money when we're on, on, on kind of shaky ground? And that's the first question. And the second question I have, if I, if I understood the, and the stems also from the financial situation that we're in, and this is maybe Director Nudelman can also answer. But what I heard from the presentation, right, was that, not Eversource.
Enterprise?
Enterprise, thank you. They are really going to take care of the maintenance of the vehicles and things of that nature, right? If there's an issue with them, they're going to manage some of those pieces. So I believe that we have two mechanics in the city. So are their positions in any way in jeopardy as a result of us now outsourcing our fleet? So I just want to make sure that our jobs in the city are being protected.
Yeah, no one's losing their jobs. And the need for the mechanics, actually, this would would help them do other things that, like, we're not able to do, also tires and whatnot. Greg, who oversees highway, can probably speak to that a little more. The money question? So, yes, things are shaky. But we've been putting money aside in capital for this first appropriation and putting this lease into the budget is something we can plan for. It also, we're not, we're not wedded to, it's, it's a five-year expenditure and we're not, we don't have to renew the lease. There's an option to buy them out, there's an option to just give them back. There's an option to add cars if we can afford it. But I had a great example and I totally forgot. There was something else that we did and brought it into the budget for predictability and knowing what the cost would rather than coming back for capital. When I'm at finance, a couple of times, we've talked about looking at these kind of expense, different expenses and how we can bring money back into the budget and reduce the amount of free cash. It's kind of like a tax return. You know, it feels great when you get the check, but you're basically getting your money back after the government makes money on your money. So just trying to to kind of move there when when we can. But I, yeah, this, a planned cost, we're ready for it. And again, the amount of repair and unknowingness, like, we can lose a car and it can be out for months and then we drive another car and then that breaks down. But, yeah, the mechanic's job in no way in in danger at all. They have plenty to do.
Counselor Riley and then Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, so I, well, first I want to make a statement, then I have two questions. So the statement is that largely I support doing something like this. You know, I know for many years now, we've had an aspiration towards having all of our vehicles move towards electric and hybrid. And I think this gets us the closest realistically than we're probably going to get for a very long time. Just as a, knowing how much some of these vehicles cost to purchase them outright. So on the surface, I'm absolutely in support of this. So first question that I have, in all of the votes that I have taken in City Council, the only one that I regret voting for, and I wish that I had listened to Counselor Denham at the time because she was the only person that voted against it, is that we paid a lot of money to buy a Tesla. And over the course of the time when that vote happened, that organization and its leader have absolutely destroyed the government and I would argue put us in more financial jeopardy than even COVID put us in, is dangerous, dangerous rise of fascism. So I remember when we had that initial conversation, the Teslas were the only vehicles that the police department could use because they were the only vehicles that have the opportunity to outfit the vehicles in the ways that the police department need. So the question is, what are the brands of all of the vehicles that are being purchased? And is there a way for us to put a restriction on ensuring that no taxpayer dollars go go towards Tesla and Elon Musk?
So Greg had no Teslas, all American. I don't know if any car is American anymore, and Nissan. So we have Fords, we have Chevys, and we have this one Nissan all-wheel-drive, kind of interesting EV that we want to try, try out to see if it could be helpful for staff like the building inspector and and whatnot. The, the, the ban or prohibition on on Teslas, I believe, is up to City Council. You know, and and putting, you know, language around that.
Okay. And so then the second question that I have. Interestingly, I think nobody in this room knows this, but before I became a city councillor, I was a licensed property and casualty adjuster. So I know that leases have different insurance policies than purchasing vehicles outright. So with that context, are there any sort of mileage restrictions on the vehicles when we lease them? Anything like that? Because I know if if you go over that, you end up paying a lot more money to the organization that you're leasing the vehicles from.
I'm smiling because I just flipped my lease because I had too many months on. Like, literally, last week. Yeah, so it doesn't have the, it doesn't have those restrictions. And with the five-year flip of the cars, it's one of the reasons why we we did that to make sure also, just the wear and tear on the vehicles. We've worked with our insurance company, Maya, to be very clear. This is, these are leases. There are different requirements for just the amount of coverage we have. It's been a switchover process. We've not seen increases in our car insurance. We anticipate seeing increases in all of our insurance. I mean, health insurance, we've already had, but we would anticipate the insurance going up, just like all insurance is going up, but not because we are leasing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Connor.
Mayor, so a couple of things you said may have already answered my question. And the first one was, was this, when you did the budget last year, planned for this lease arrangement? Or is this subsequent to that budget? And you did say that going forward, these would be expenses that would be in the budget, so yay. And you used the same word I was going to ask you, like, does this promote predictability? And it does. So, A, were you planning on this and where does it land in the greater plan? And also, it says ten vehicles for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Is that, what is ten thousand per vehicle, what is that length of time? I mean, I'm doing the math. Is there more to this number that you've already saved?
No, the, Greg really should take that question. He's shaking his head, right? He's like, Mayor, don't open your mouth. What I will say is that this has been in the planning stage for three years. And the reason why this didn't come forward last year was we were thinking we were going to do something out of capital and do that every year. And then when we talked to our auditors and also other cities that had done it, that because cars lose value so fast, it really should be worked into the budget. And that was the big change. So we, we didn't know how or should we look at it. And we were also waiting to hope that more EVs would be realistically available. And, you know, I was the holdup too because I, I didn't want to buy more hybrid police cars and there was nothing crash-rated, so we, we went with what we knew.
Can I just go?
Yeah, please.
So, no, I forgot.
Well, we can also.
It was really brilliant, too.
We could potentially have Greg chime in on your first question.
Okay, Greg, save me.
Greg, go ahead.
Hello again, everyone. Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I think I want to add something, right? So of that cost, Counselor Connor, the hundred and six thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine you have in front of you tonight, that is outfit for the police cruisers and the fire department admin vehicles, as well as some small outfit for the other vehicles, radios and things like that. And the lease payments on the first eight vehicles that we're ordering straight away for the remainder of this fiscal year, should they come in in time? We can't really say with much certainty which ones we'll have on the ground in the city before June thirtieth. A couple of them may come in. I don't expect seeing the police and fire vehicles by then, but it's possible. So we have to make sure that that money is accounted for in the budget. And then when I bring my, the DPW budget through City Council for FY twenty-six, there will be a larger line item in there for the lease payments for the entirety of FY twenty-six.
I remembered my question. And this might be you, Greg, it might be you, Mayor. When you, when you've come to the conclusion that this is a better idea than doing maintenance on old things, do you have numbers for, like, tracking the maintenance that we've been paying for X number of years? And is there a point where it becomes a break-even point where it just makes more sense to lease? And do you have that data that that I could see? Maybe everyone would like to see?
You will be very pleased with the amount of data that and spreadsheets. You will be very pleased with the amount of data that, and spreadsheets. Um, the repair to lease, um, ratio, we're so far behind the ball on this. Um, I'm sure there's a point, I, I don't expect to see that point, like, this year or next year. Um, but our anticipation is the regular maintenance is much lower, um, on these cars as well as every time we get a car, um, on the lease, a car leaves the fleet. So, it's eliminated that way. Um, over time, it should, there's a point, but I, I don't anticipate really knowing that. Um, uh, Director Nudelman has the spreadsheets and, from Enterprise and the original assessment from Move EV that kind of got us here. Um, and I, I don't know if Enterprise is here tonight. Um, but whatever you would need, we, we could get it. They're, they've been really responsive and, um, oh, Enterprise is here. So.
And, yeah, if you want to chime in, Josh?
Yeah, not to tell the council.
Sure, yeah, hey, uh, Josh Rondo, I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management. Um, thanks for having me. And, and so we've put a ton of work into this, right, over about eight months. Uh, Mayor, uh, Greg and I have worked closely for the majority of that time, too. Um, to answer your, your question, that date is hard to kind of put a timeline on because part of the reason is that this is a flexible program, you guys are kind of always in the, in the reins, are holding the reins. So, we, depending on how much you kind of, um, engage or, or look to flip the fleet to newer quicker, that point will kind of tip back. Um, vehicles are going to need maintenance no matter what. Um, newer vehicles need far, far less. Um, so, you know, the replacement plan works by replacing the oldest vehicles first and then so forth and so on. Um, predicting a fleet's kind of, it's a little bit of a moving target. Um, but if we stay on kind of where we prescribe, best-case scenario to get the, this, um, you know, East Hampton's fleet caught up and electrified as, I'm not going to say quickly, but as, in a steady pattern, as quickly as we can, it's about five years to turn the entire fleet over, at which point safely you could say the maintenance would be as low as we can possibly get with continually new vehicles being, being refreshed. So, it's hard to, couldn't give you an exact date on the calendar, but, uh, the short answer is as quickly as you guys want to, you want to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Sergeant Bowyer from the Police Department. Um, I am currently, uh, in charge of our fleet maintenance. Um, I took it over upon Sergeant Ross's retirement in, uh, January. So, um, I just started this and, um, boy, have I been in for some fun. But, um, it's already kind of been said, but aside from electrifying the fleet, um, our fleet is just, it's getting old, it's falling apart. Um, just in the five, six weeks that I've been doing this, um, I think, uh, poor Dennis and, uh, down at Motor Repair has seen all of our cruisers at some point. Um, every, every time I call him, it's another 600 on this cruiser, 1,200 on this cruiser. And it's, they're all repairs that we need to get these cars back on the road, um, back on patrol. So, um, just to kind of give you, uh, an idea of, uh, where we're at, our, uh, two newest Mark cruisers are 2023s. Um, and the next newest cruiser, um, from that is a 2020 with 100,000 miles on it and everything else is older. Um, I have cruisers all the way up to 150,000 miles. So, we're, we're getting to a point of being in dire need of, of, uh, replacing this fleet. So, that's where we're at on the police side.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Denham.
Yep, um, thank you for that. Um, question, not, not for you, but I appreciate you taking that over. Um, this is actually for, um, um, Auditor Patel. I think I referred to you as assessor and I apologize, but I often think of you as assessing our budget. Um, can you tell us what the, and this is really for the public, right? So, can you tell us what the, the budget will be for the capital stabilization after this?
Yes, I can. Um, after these two appropriations, we'll have $3,053,076 left in this account.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Adel. Do you have more?
No, that was it.
Counselor Kuzinski.
Um, let's see. Looks like we need to get some vehicles and get them soon. That's become clear. Usually when we get to 100,000, the, the police are here and they're saying, hey, you know, folks, this is not working for us, we need new vehicles. Uh, we either buy them, or we bought them. Sometimes we bought vehicles that we maybe wouldn't like to have previously purchased. Uh, and I appreciate folks saying that before. Uh, Counselor Riley, I appreciate your, your, your comments on this. I would definitely put an exclusion of certain vehicles and that we exclude Teslas from any possible lease and that we codify that in our, uh, in our language, uh, as one of the requirements. That being said, I did have a question about, uh, Mayor, if you had one quick second?
A question?
You had talked about, uh, being able to, well, listen, if they don't, if it doesn't work out, if we don't want the vehicle, we can, you know, the, the lease period, I think it's for three?
Five.
Five, five years, it's a five-year lease. And we could always give the car back or we could buy out. If we give back, is there front, front-end loaded costs where you, you're going to lose money by, by doing that?
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah, so it's really not something that you look forward to doing. You really have to have a lemon, but I presume that it'd be there. Whose problem would it be if you did get a lemon on a lease? Maybe our lease, had someone-
I mean, we would work with Enterprise, I mean, ultimately Enterprise is the leasing, I mean, the lease or we're the leasing. Um, the city could file the 93A Lemon Law claim or, or Enterprise maybe, or, or you certainly would, but.
That, that's good, I appreciate the work that's gone in here. Uh, I appreciate the auditor for speaking out about what we'll have left in capital stabilization, that the money's been funded already in anticipation of a car purchase. That's good to know also, helps to make our decisions, I think, easier. Uh, those are my questions.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to offer, um,
Oh, I'm happy to listen.
It's a dangerous thing to say, I got a lot to say. Um, not, but on this, um, with, uh, Josh from Enterprise, Greg from DPW on, on here, um, you know, the action of council going forward as far as, uh, codifying, um, brands of car or whatnot, happy to say that, you know, we will not accept a recommendation of a Tesla going forward until there's, you know, action or, or whatnot, so.
Appreciate that. Um, thank you. Uh, just a, a quick question. Um, so, we're going to be replacing cars. Uh, and I know generally the process for that is they, there's like a, you know, municipal kind of, uh, uh, junk program. Um, are we going to be able to trade in any of the cars? Maybe to potentially, or is, are we just going to go with the, um, why is it escaping me? It's like-
Surplusing now?
It's surplusing.
Yeah, um, I, Greg did a lot of research on this with procurement law. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, Greg and Andrew really got handed a whole big project unexpectedly. So, I appreciate their, their work on it, um, but Greg can, can speak to that.
Go ahead, Greg.
So, so once we have the other vehicles here and things moved around accordingly, because some vehicles are being reassigned as part of this to get some of the oldest stuff out of the fleet across the city, uh, we'll be back to the city council with that list of vehicles for permission to surplus them and they will be surplus with Enterprise's assistance.
Okay, beautiful, that, that answers my question, appreciate that. Thanks, Greg. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Okay, uh, seeing none? Oh, wait, oh, oh, come on up, sorry, missed you.
Carl Proll, Torrey Street. I really don't have a lot to say on this, I don't know the minutia, minutia. But one thing that really stuck out to me in this age of subscriptions and owning nothing, is it a good idea to be leasing our first responder vehicles? Will we have them if we can't afford to re-up that lease if things get dire? And again, I have no idea about the, you know, maintenance fees, what it's costing, but there won't be another 30-year-old vehicle in the fleet if we suddenly skip to all leases. And is that setting us up to be a sustainable environment? Is that actually moving on the right stage to be sustainable? It's not just about batteries. Thank you.
That's a valid point. Um, Counselor Denham, do you want to?
Well, I was just wondering, does the Mayor or Director Nolan want to respond to that? I think that was a really great question.
I thought it was a great, I really did, I mean, not at all being, um, uh, pithy about it. Um, I would throw the question to Josh and/or Greg about that exact situation. Um, and maybe Josh because he's the lease guy who's dealing with this and then, uh, Greg or I could jump in.
Yeah, so they, there are leases, um, with payments. If, for some reason, there is, you know, default or an inability to pay everything, there's the conversation about how that looks. We're not, you know, we're in a partnership business, so we're looking to kind of keep everything going. But if it's a case of severe default, then typically vehicles are, are turned in. Um, municipalities have traditionally next-to-zero risk in our eyes and we rarely, rarely see, you know, if, if we've ever seen a default with municipalities, especially for frontline vehicles like cruisers, um, where they serve such a, you know, integral part of what you guys are, are doing. So, um, gut feeling is if those were kind of on the chopping block, I think the town would be in very, very serious trouble, um, across the board. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it is a leased vehicle, so if there's any, um, you know, if there's a default on it, it would be like any other asset, um, that's being defaulted on.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just weigh in on that for a second. What we, what we have here and what we're proposing to, to do with this first, the initial round is kind of a small sample of the fleet. Um, we will still own the majority of our vehicles. I think it breaks down to about, we have about 100 vehicles altogether between heavy-duty trucks and lighter-duty vehicles. And I think it's about 60 to 65 are light-duty vehicles. So, in, in this, you know, it's, it's, it's a small portion of them. And if, at least for the, for the time being, it's a, that's this, something we'll evaluate moving forward, if this is the, is the right path to keep the city, um, moving towards getting, you know, more fuel-efficient vehicles and right sizing vehicles for their tasks. Um, right now, one of these vehicles will take a 2007 Chevy Silverado that's at the Parks Department. That's the V8 full-size pickup truck that's getting used to, uh, drive around and unlock and clean bathrooms and replace that with a, uh, a Ford Maverick Hybrid, which is significantly more fuel-efficient vehicle that's right-sized for its, for its job. So, um, but we will still own the, the vast majority of, of our vehicles that we have, although many of them are up for replacement.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Connor.
Just real quick, is part of this arrangement leased to buy? Is there any opportunity at any point if we wanted to purchase a vehicle?
I would, the conditions, I would talk to Josh, defer to Josh.
Yeah, correct. Um, the, the structure of these is something called an equity lease, which is actually really as close to your ownership as you can get in terms of lease arrangements. So, the, the town owns the equity, uh, in the vehicles. You can purchase essentially or take title by just satisfying the, the remainder of the lease at any, at any time.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, any other?
Can I just point out one?
Yeah. Go ahead.
For the council?
Oh, uh, since Director Nudelman brought it up, um, just in terms of evaluation, I would hope that you all will kind of begin to put that evaluation together so that at the end, we can kind of all together kind of look, was this something that was in the best interest of the city? Is this something we want to continue to move forward with? And, and hope that that's a process that's kind of ongoing and not kind of at the end. But, just, that was just a comment, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to the, the public comment, uh, question and, and just overall commitment. So, right now, the, the amount of cars that are in this first group, um, we're not obligated to do more. Like, when we're talking about switching the fleet over, it's not automatically, there are two more cars or, or whatnot. And it's, you know, um, tracking it via spreadsheet and repairs going down or whatnot. It's itemized and we will be looking at that. Um, I don't think it's unreasonable to think there will be future years within like this five-year that we won't add cars. I mean, that, that's kind of one of the, you know, we're not going to add to the budget. We feel confident for the term of this lease, for the number of vehicles. Um, it's affordable and it, it is a great way for us to catch up on vehicles. But there very well might be years where we will, we will just keep that line item the way it is and not, you know, go up another two or, or whatever the, the spreadsheet recommends.
And before, before I take your question, Counselor Kuzinski, uh, go ahead, Josh, if you wanted to respond to.
So, I will, I'll say this too. So, we are very flexible in terms of financing. Um, we approach a variety of businesses and towns and fleets in very similar shapes, um, and age and, you know, Flintstones level of wear, um, on them. Uh, and we can, we can kind of change, right? So, we're looking at a lease program now. Um, oftentimes, um, partners of ours will engage the lease program for that cash flow benefit to replace a large number of vehicles at once, um, get caught up, if you will. Um, and then from there, we can, we can structure these to either take full payment on a lease and it sits on a lease agreement, but it's not, you know, anything owed, essentially. We can take half, we can, we can kind of maneuver this. Essentially, at that point, the town can buy vehicles from us that are sitting on a lease agreement and take title and they need to. Um, but we're, you know, super, we're super flexible about that. So, if there's a catch-up period, we want to lease 25 vehicles, which is about half the light-duty fleet, get you guys in nice shape or better shape, and then reassess cash. We're open to whatever the city's needs, wants, priorities are of, of any particular year. So, it's, it's super flexible, you guys are always kind of driving. Um, there isn't a subscription, so to speak, with this, there's recommendations every year that you can accept decline. We kind of look at how that models out into the future, if it doesn't. Um, but it's, you know, again, it's really all about kind of meeting the priorities, um, that you guys are looking to do year in and year out. And, uh, to the recording, um, kind of tracking parts that were, that were mentioned, um, benchmarking year to year, part of, just by partnering with us, leasing some vehicles, you're gaining essentially two employees, one that's a strategy manager that will kind of in-depth, take a deep dive into those types of benchmarks, like where maintenance sits, where it's set from where, um, we started this journey, what it would look like if we added X number more vehicles. So, there's a lot of kind of in-depth reporting and whatnot that you get back, um, that is probably on a level that very few municipalities or, or even commercial entities do on their own typically. So, um, you know, we do really well in this space and I'd, I'd love to bring it to the town.
Thank you. Counselor Kuzinski.
I think you may have answered my question, Josh, uh, but if I, you haven't, please let me know. Uh, and Mayor, you had talked about tracking repairs and doing an analysis. And so, we have our own repair records for our own vehicles that we've had so far. We have the current vehicles in fleet and we keep those, all those costs. How much did it cost to maintain? How much did it cost to repair? Are all those figures included? It sounded like they were, Josh, and then that, and that was available to us in report form. So, those numbers would be kept by the city. Is that true?
Yes, so, so when we, we put together an initial model for this, it's actually a 10-year budget plan. Um, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, whether we supplied numbers or we used industry data? Um, I believe we used industry-
Yes.
Yeah.
Industry data.
So, we use industry averages, we, we pull, um, maintenance data. It's pretty common for municipalities and, and, uh, you know, government entities to not have taken incredibly detailed records on, on maintenance dollars, unfortunately. Um, but when modeling, we pull from a pool of about 700,000 other similar, um, government vehicles in a cent-per-mile fashion and we are able to get incredibly accurate, um, in terms of what maintenance cost would look like for any given fleet of a municipal makeup.
And the report-
But we'll also have repair costs for the specific vehicles that we are leasing in addition to the industry numbers.
So-
Is that correct? Like, we're going to buy 10, we're going to buy, we're going to lease 10 vehicles, vehicle A, B, C through whatever, and, and we'll know, oh, this, this vehicle costs X in repairs, X in maintenance.
I misunderstood the question. I thought you were talking about the cars we have now. So, every time a car goes to highway that we own now that gets repaired, we have tracking of that.
Right.
And, um, and so if there is a repair needed on a leased vehicle, there might be some we do in-house and there'd be tracking. But also, if it's something that Enterprise had to do for some reason, there would be tracking of that cost. So, we could monitor.
Right, and we'll keep track of, we'll, we'll have that information. Good, I think it'll be good to evaluate the program and using that information also. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions from councilors or the public?
We had to, we were out, out where, we hadn't gone to the-
I don't think we have any questions, there's no hands up.
You can ask.
We have another hand up. Please, since there's nobody else, you can go again.
To prove that I really don't have a lot of interest in this. I guess my question then is for Josh. What is the difference between the cost you would charge the city to purchase the vehicles versus the MSRP? What would it cost the city just to buy it? You spoke about, you know, the city gaining two extra employees by utilizing your fleet services, but I'm guessing Enterprise isn't offering that service out of the kindness of their heart. And I guess the second part of that question is, when we're talking the cost of repairs for city vehicles, is that taking, is that separating the cost of parts with labor? Because I guess as a local business owner, the idea of keeping money in our local economy is good. And if we're paying that to our city mechanics to do repairs on our vehicles, that feels like a more tenable expense as opposed to a line item every year going to Enterprise and their stockholders. Thank you.
So your second question first. The way we currently have it set up to move forward is it means it's management program, which means it does mechanics stay on, they service vehicles as they normally would, with an option to utilize local shops as a pass-through kind of à la carte scenario. So essentially, yeah, we keep, to keep it going local, it's not a line item that just goes to Enterprise. And I apologize, the first part of your question one more time?
It was the difference between the MSRP and the cost to buy a deli set then, I believe.
Difference between MSRP and the residual? Or MSRP versus purchasing kind of as you currently are? We buy from a few different sources, factory ordering being the primary, primary one as we get into the program and start to proactively order things. So factory ordering typically yields anywhere between $1,500 and $3,000 less than MSRP just on itself. You can select options à la carte there, so you can weed out whatever options you may not need or would have been encumbered to take off of a dealer's lot. Also, government incentives or research and, you know, research and applied as possible, which are very steep and still available at this point. Government incentives, depending on the vehicle type range, anywhere between $500 and $3,000. That Aria that we mentioned, Nissan Aria, was brought in because we do see some, I guess bespoke incentives. As a fleet management company, there's a $9,000 incentive on that vehicle that we're able to capitalize on. So that's part of our work is to research and present the best vehicles to fit a certain job category based off of that acquisition price. Given the lease structure, there's a residual put on there that's pretty conservative in terms of, you know, when we're working with municipalities, we're pretty conservative with our residual. It's a case-by-case basis for types of cars.
Any other comments from the council or the public? Mayor, did you want to finish up?
Yeah, and Greg can probably speak to the specifics, but from 30,000. So we are having a big problem using local shops because they can't fix new cars. And the cars that are old, it's just not worth repairing them. And we use Markot and other bigger companies or bigger dealerships to get those parts in to fix them. So while there are local businesses that are generous with keeping the fleet we have now and the cars we have now, like, together as much as they can, they aren't equipped, like, if it's a Ford Interceptor that we have now, it's, we go to Markot. And again, no one loses their job. The mechanics have more than enough work. And in reality, we do not have the equipment in our highway garage to repair, never mind our mechanics doing it. And they would continue doing, you know, tires and some basics. So Greg, to wrap it up, you might just want to speak to that, to the details of it.
Yeah, we run into it quite frequently, especially with the hybrid vehicles and just the newer, any of the newer vehicles we have. They have to go back to the dealer more often than you'd like. And I mean, one thing to point out with these leases is that for the majority of their time with the city, they will be covered by the factory warranty and going back to, whether it be Markot or, I'm not sure who the local Chevy dealer would be that we would use, but Burke, it'd be Burke in Northampton. But I also wanted to mention that if we weren't looking to buy these vehicles outright right now, the vote that I have for a fully marked line cruiser for the police department is in the area of $85,000. So we'd be looking, if we weren't in front of council with this appropriation tonight, yet trying to fund the same amount of vehicles, just the two police cruisers would be 180 to 200,000, two admin for the fire department. I think those were about 55,000 apiece. So this turns into, what this does is really lets us put close to half a million dollars' worth of vehicles in service in the city without having to lay out a half a million dollars in capital. So I think that there is some unspoken benefit to that as well.
I have one final question. With the tariffs that have just been announced, I know that there's been a lot of discussion today about how that's going to increase the cost immediately for purchasing new vehicles. Do you anticipate that that's going to bleed over into lease payments at all? Or would that be another significant difference between purchasing new vehicles outright versus leasing? And would that be a benefit for us in that case?
I would, I.
Yeah, I can't really speak to the effect of tariffs.
And yes, the tariffs are going to affect, yes, they're going to affect the lease payments, and that might be one of the reasons why we keep, our hope would be, and when we talk to Enterprise and Josh, is that the vehicles that we are before you now are on someone's lot right now, and we can get them that way. It still takes a lot of time, but tariffs are not. It's destabilizing for those markets. I don't know how the prices stay where they are now, and they're already high. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Any further thoughts before we have Counselor Pete give us the motion? I would say, let's get the motion on the table, Counselor Pete.
I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: $106,799. To be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $106,799. To be transferred to electric vehicle, electric slash vehicle, electric slash hybrid vehicle leasing, $30,978. Electric slash hybrid vehicle leasing, $2,046. FY25 police electric slash hybrid vehicle, $56,275. FY25 fire electric slash hybrid vehicle, $14,500. FY25 admin electric slash hybrid vehicle, $3,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The Department of Public Works has been working with Move EV and Enterprise Fleet Service to further the city's transition away from gas-powered light-duty vehicles in favor of electric and hybrid alternatives in coordination with the police, fire, and Parks Department. They have developed a list of 10 vehicles to be acquired in this initial round of leasing agreements. Leasing these 10 vehicles will allow for older gas-powered vehicles to be removed from service and represents a major step forward towards achieving the goals outlined in East Hampton's Climate Action Plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one comment.
Counselor Denham.
You know, I genuinely want to be supportive, right? And I'll vote to support this. But I am particularly given Counselor Jadzic's question just now. It makes me want to engage with the various departments just evaluating this kind of quarterly of cost of this, et cetera, and impact. I do think that that is a very important factor, cost that I think we need to be monitoring, particularly in light of the instability of our, I'll just say, economy. I could say many words, but I'll just go with economy.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Any against or abstaining? Motion passes. And I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, we've got one more.
I really wish I could.
This one should be awfully easy.
Thanks, Counselor Pete. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
The second supplemental appropriation is for $286,103 from Capital Stabilization towards an FY25 Western Star Dump Truck. So we had a dump truck from 1995. That is not old at all for a human being. It is very old for a dump truck. So that dump truck, the International 4900 Heavy Duty, was removed from service two years ago because of extensive rot and safety issues. So we no longer have that dump truck. We would like, the Department of Public Works would like to have a dump truck to replace that one, which again, is no longer in service. Like, this is, so it's not a question of can we push this out a couple more years? Like, it's done. We need to get a new one. I think we all agree that the city should have a dump truck. And so, yeah, that's, it's expensive because these things are expensive. But the Finance Committee did vote three to zero to approve this appropriation. I don't know that it necessarily warrants the same sort of debate we just had. I think we can all agree on this one as something that's probably going to happen.
Okay, any comments from councilors? Oh, it looks like I got one here. Counselor Krasinski.
Is it possible to lease the vehicle?
Actually, I got this. But it's a good question. There isn't really, like, the really, really heavy-duty stuff is, that's like something that the city's looking into, but we're not quite there yet, so.
I would imagine that with, you know, the weather changing, generally we get less snow. It might be something to consider. But I understand that this particular vehicle type is not available. It's necessary, we've had it. It will have it for a long time, I hope.
I hope. Maybe not 30 years, they don't make them like they used to, but.
Oh, don't say that.
But who knows, maybe we get lucky anyway.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Okay, let's read that motion.
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: $286,103. To be transferred from Capital Stabilization to be transferred to FY25 Western Star Dump Truck. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the replacement of Truck 33. This vehicle was a 1995 International 4900 Heavy Duty truck that had to be removed from service in 2023 due to extensive rot and safety issues. We are requesting $286,103 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization to fund this expense.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say that I think it's worth noting that we replaced two vehicles tonight that were predated, East Hampton being a city. Because East Hampton became a city in 1996. I think that's just worth acknowledging. And all those in favor? Any against or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes now. Can I please entertain a motion?
I move to close the public hearing. Will that have any effect on, my question is, does that have any effect on the moving back to public safety, the issue of the one-way street? By closing this hearing, that closes the hearing. We're not going to bring it up in the near future?
No, because we already moved it.
We sent it back to committee, but if we haven't closed the hearing on it. This, this.
You dealt with it.
We dealt with it. We've sent it back to committee, so it's no longer in.
Just wanted to be sure we weren't prejudicing it coming back.
No, I don't think so. I think we're good. So all those in favor? Any against or abstentions? Seeing none, let's move on. Thank you. We have a request for immediate attention, which is.
We were still on public speech.
I think we're good for the public speech. I'm comfortable with being done with public speech. We have a resolution in support of the Fair Charter School Reimbursement Act. And Counselor Denham, would you like to tee this up?
I would, I would. Thank you so much, Mr. President. And also, I'm going to, I will say a couple of brief words, but I will defer to a couple of guests that we have in the room who have done a lot of work on this already regionally, as well as for our own school districts. So this is a resolution in support of HD4439, which is the Fair Charter School Reimbursement Act, which is really related to school funding inequities in the Commonwealth and its impact on East Hampton public schools as it relates to charter school reimbursement. It's been a very long evening thus far, and so I think that there are some folks online. Jesus Leiva, who has done a lot of work around charter school reimbursement and this particular resolution with Representative Gomez. So Jesus, if you would be, Mr. President, if you would welcome the opportunity for Jesus to speak on this particular matter and give us more context. That would be appreciated.
Thank you for waiting, Jesus. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm actually going to just read from a brief prepared statement, and if there are any questions afterwards, I'd be happy to stay and answer them. Thank you for your consideration in passing a resolution in support of H4439 and Act to Amend Charter School Tuition Reimbursement Provisions. Representative Gomez, who you know, submitted this bill to the legislature on behalf of his district and the six school committees undersigned to advocate for this proposal. That's Amherst, Amherst-Pellon Regional, East Hampton, Greenfield, Northampton, South Hadley, as well as the Northampton City Council. The proposals currently on the table in the legislature to support new K-12 education funding unfortunately largely ignore East Hampton and districts like East Hampton, as did the Student Opportunity Act. While such provisions, such as increasing reimbursement to the special education circuit breaker, improved transportation funding, and fixing the inflation calculation error in the Chapter 70 funding formula would all bring new funding to East Hampton as a function of the costs per capita benefits and factoring for East Hampton's wealth or lack thereof, East Hampton would once again draw the short straw in the school funding. For this reason, we must vigorously advocate for policy changes that will bring new funding to East Hampton specifically. Nothing will bring more new funding to East Hampton than addressing the municipal cost impact of charter school public funding because East Hampton is asymmetrically impacted by this policy. We ask you tonight to join your school committee and the City Council of Northampton in supporting House Bill 4439. We also invite you to attend the state local aid hearing taking place at 11:00 a.m. March 24th at UMass Amherst. It's rare that a state budget hearing is held in Western Mass, and this represents a real opportunity to show up in person in full force in support of our education funding advocacy agenda. I do realize that 11:00 a.m. on a Monday is hard for people who work full-time, but for those of you who might be retired, have flexible work hours, or are otherwise available that day, this is the time to bring parents, teachers, city officials, anybody in the community, you know, to basically show up and, you know, say to state officials that we need the funding. And that's basically my statement, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And does anybody have any questions first off for Jesus?
Point of clarification, can you just repeat the date and the time of the meeting?
Sure. Hold on, going back. So the meeting, this is a State Ways and Means Committee hearing that's going to be happening March 24th, Monday, at 11:00 a.m. at UMass Amherst.
Okay, thank you.
I can send more details by email to Counselor Denham about the specific building that the meeting will be held in.
Great, sir, thank you. And do we have other people that are going to speak to this as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have school committee member Sam Hunter, who is also here to speak on this. And it is important to note that while the school committee didn't reference HD4439, they did pass a resolution more broadly talking about funding reimbursement.
Yes, and the reason we didn't um reference that um HD four-four-three-nine is because it hadn't been um proposed yet. So this is really exciting. It's been very, um, it's been, it's been, actually, I've been working with Jesus on this. Um, he uh approached me uh about this a few months ago, and it's actually been really exciting, because a lot of times I find when I get involved in stuff like this, it kind of, we, we do a lot of work and then it kind of sits there. And so this, it's actually been really cool to see um this moving, moving along. So essentially, um, just to like give a little bit of background about East Hampton and just for like the benefit of the public, um, at the moment, for this past fiscal year, we spent one point eighty-six million dollars on um tuition for school choice and charter schools. Now, this is a little bit confusing, because um we actually also get a lot of, we, we, we almost break even on school choice. We come very close to breaking even, because every school choice student we get brings tuition with them. Um, the way that it works is that every time a student um goes to a charter school or goes to, uh, does a, um, goes to another district via school choice, they take uh tuition with them um to that new school. So for the school choice aspect, East Hampton comes close to breaking even, but where we really have a lot of trouble is with charter schools. Um, and so as you all know, we have Hilltown Charter right here in East Hampton. Um, for students who attend Hilltown Charter, we're also required to provide them with transportation if they live more than two miles away from the school. Um, so transportation is another um challenge. Um, well, it's a challenge for everybody, but it's especially a challenge in East Hampton. Um, and I also wanna just say, because I feel like um some of the nuance gets lost in public sometimes, like, you know, if you have a child who is thriving at a, at a charter school, or you really want your child to go to a school in a different district, maybe you work there. Um, I, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. Like, I think, you know, we all have to make the right decisions for our kids and um, I just want the, the, and all of us at the School Committee, we just want the funding to be more fair. Um, and right now, our, um, our enrollment is declining, uh, which brings down, you know, that brings down the amount of money that we um received to run the um, the schools. The enrollment's not declining because everybody's sending their kids out of district. It's declining because the number of children being born is declining. Um, so the whole way that this formula was set up in the nineties um just doesn't really account for the way that we live now. And so East Hampton is one of the, the districts in our area that's the most affected, especially by charter schools. Um, and that would actually stand to benefit the most from this bill being passed. Um, and one example that I always like to give um is when, for East Hampton specifically, is that, you know, I was on School Committee about ten years ago. Um, and I'm on School Committee now, and we have never, in the time that I've been involved in the schools, been able to have a consistent world languages program at our middle school. Um, and the reason for this is um just because it's, it's one of those um kind of optional things. There's no MCAS test for French in seventh grade. Um, and so it's been one of the areas that we can cut, so we have cut it. Um, meanwhile, we have the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School, which started um right down the road from us, which a number of students from East Hampton attend. And um those students are able to access a high-quality bilingual education starting in kindergarten. And um we would love to offer something even close to that here in East Hampton, and we can't, because we're spending so much money on sending children to attend a charter school to learn another language. The other thing that, just personally for myself, and I know for others on the committee, um, one of the things that we've um really struggled with is special education funding and the, the whole, we could like have a whole other hearing about how special education funding works, but uh, the fact is, uh, charter schools um in, do not uh take on the same burden as public school districts do in educating students with uh special education needs. Um, they are required to provide a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities. But the fact is, um, a lot of students with disabilities don't attend charter schools. If they do attend charter schools, they're kind of, um, it's suggested that maybe they would get more services in their regu, in their, um, in their sending district. And students who uh require, you know, more intensive uh services and supports, charter schools don't pay for that. Our, our public schools do. So that's kind of another um aspect of this that's, that's unfair. We kind of end up um with more students who uh require more resources, and charter schools are able to work with students who require fewer uh resources in that way. Um, so we're just looking to, like I said, we're not trying to like take down um charter and choice. And, and also, the school choice um question when it comes to East Hampton is a little more complicated now, which is so exciting for me to say, because when I was first on School Committee, that was not the story in East Hampton at all. And now to say that we're um, we're, we're, we're making money off, not making money off of school choice, but we're coming close to breaking even in a way that I never thought we would. Um, so that's super exciting. Um, I do think that it, it means a lot to me that you all are considering um passing this resolution. I'm really excited uh to have Representative Gomez and Sabadosa um having sponsored this bill, and I'm like, would love to see uh where it goes. And it's been um a nice, I think, reminder during a time that's been really tough for all of us in civic life, that like sometimes the civic process just like works, and people um say, hey, here's a problem, and here's a, um, here's a way to solve that problem, and then we actually like do it. It's cool. Um, so I invite you all to be a part of that. And if you have any questions, you can ask me or Jesus.
I just, I just have a question. Um, I feel like I remember uh the last time I dug into this, there was, there was a bit of a difference between choice and charter as far as reimbursement, like, I feel like choice was somewhere like around five thousand dollars a student, but charter was significantly more. Is that still the case?
It, it is, and it varies from school to school. So the charter schools get to set their own tuition rates. Um, so, you know.
So it could be almost double, even?
Uh, well, it's, it's one of those costs that we really just don't have a whole lot of control over, like, and it's, um, and, you know, one of the issues, this didn't happen with choice and charter schools this year, but one of the issues that we were hit really hard with in East Hampton was um out-of-district special education uh rates. The maximum rate went up, and it's not like our, uh, our per pupil spending didn't go up to match that same amount. So, um, we're really like in public education, kind of at the whims of these larger uh forces a lot of times. And there's very few places for us to cut, and unfortunately, the places where we do end up cutting are, are places like performing arts and uh language. And now we have those two charter schools um in, in this area. So it's um, it's hard, and I feel like we've been really like, all of us in education, and this includes like my colleagues who work in charter schools. I've, I've, um, I have a lot of friends who work in charter schools as well. Um, we've all been like forced to do things that I think um aren't, are less collaborative than we would like to be. And, you know, as far as Hilltown goes, I know that they um have always expressed wanting to be a good neighbor to us. And um I've never had any, any issues with, with anybody who has been associated with, we're just all stuck in this um really bad system, where we're kind of pitted against each other in a way that I don't think we wanna be, so.
I'm so sorry to ask another one, or maybe it's, maybe it's
Yeah.
a question. I know we've been here a long time. Um, but, you know, I think East Hampton and Northampton are not necessarily unique, but are a little bit different than other communities, because we have large um, you know, non, nonprofit educational facilities in, in the city where, where faculty live that have children
Mm-hmm.
that can send them to charter schools. Um, is that addressed uh in, in this at all, or is there anything?
It is addressed in, it is addressed in this in that it's the same formula. It's the same, you know, um, if, if we have a, a number of families in town who are choosing to send their kids to Hilltown. One of, we, we are, that does kind of, Hilltown in particular really has an impact of us, on us because of the transportation. Um, and this does address that. It, it doesn't like, it's not kind of written specifically for that. It just, it evens out the um, the state's contribution to the charter school, um, uh, to the, the tuition for the charter schools. Um, but in terms of like, you know, I think one of the um, and actually, this is what, your question is a really good example. Like, one of the things that I've um really tried to do is to like think about places where we end up, I, I don't wanna end up like pitting members of our community against each other. And I have had parents, you know, come up to me as a School Committee member or as a member of my, of our um Special Education PAC saying like, I really wanna keep my kid in district, and it is just not working for our family, or it is just not working for my kid, and they need something different. And I feel so bad about that, because I really, I really believe in public education, and I really believe that like they should go to school here. And my answer to that is always like, you have to, you've gotta make the choice that's right for your kid. And so in this way, like, parents are gonna be more free to make choices that are right for their families and for their kids without um, without like affecting the schools, our, the, our district's finances so extremely, which is what I think everybody wants, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could I add a clarifying um statement?
Absolutely, please.
So I, I just wanted to go back and answer that, that question about the difference between school choice and, and charter sending tuition. So school choice sending tuition, um, when we send a, a, a student to another public school district is capped at five thousand dollars by the state, because they understand the uh, the funding effect that it would have on the city. Uh, charter school sending tuition is not capped and is generally the full per pupil amount for that student, for that district.
Yeah.
Plus the amount that we would spend over foundation budget for that student from that district. So it's, it's, it's a considerable amount of money. And I also wanna be clear that when we're talking about this piece of legislation, as well as other um charter school funding reform legislation that is being proposed at the state level, we're not proposing to take any money away from the charter schools
Yeah.
or from charter school students. We're asking the state to take responsibility for the funding impact. It, it's important to understand that at, we're being told by the state often in small districts that the, the response that we should have to declining enrollment is to regionalize our district with other districts.
Right.
But in fact, by opening charter schools throughout the state, they are in fact actively un-regionalizing our student body. The reason why you would regionalize is to save money on fixed costs. These fixed costs are essentially doubled for a school district when you have to split them between a charter school and a public school.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, um, actually, I'm really glad you brought up the regionalization, Jesus, because that's something that I often hear from, from families in town, is that they don't want us to regionalize, uh, or they don't want, like, or, you know, they're, they're concerned about, you know, having seen other districts regionalizing in the past. Um, and I, um, we're unique in Massachusetts. If you look at the way that other states do public education, um, the way that Massachusetts does public education is really, uh, um, or New England in general, is, is unique in that we have a lot of these like very, very small districts that have a lot of local control. Um, that's kind of a model that you don't see in, in much of the country. Um, and so one of the um, one of the downsides to that is that, you know, like, it's, it's expensive to run a school district. Um, and, you know, so there's obviously like bigger conversations to be had about regionalization, but the um, the charter schools really do put pressure on school districts to have to cut things that they can cut. And um, and also, the charter schools have to get their, um, they have to pay for their buildings and their upkeep and everything out of their tuition costs as well. So, um, that's another reason why those tuition costs are so much higher. So, it's, uh, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you. Uh, seeing none? I don't think. Councilor Denham?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this was a resolution put together by myself, Councilor Jadzik, and uh, Councilor Smith, and um, with the President, um, Councilor Jadzik is gonna read the resolution.
Yeah, absolutely.
The City of East Hampton is deeply committed to the success of our school district and the success and well-being of all of our students. Additionally, we recognize the school funding inequity in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and its effect on East Hampton public schools. And we support the East Hampton School Committee Resolution and similar petitions in other affected communities in the Commonwealth that advocate for equitable charter school tuition reimbursement. Whereas the Massachusetts State Legislature is considering passage of Bill HD four-four-three-nine, the Fair Charter School Reimbursement Act, which is sponsored by Representatives Omar Gomez and Lindsay Sabadosa. And whereas one point eight-six million is the amount for school choice and charter schools that was deducted from the East Hampton Public School District's state aid in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And whereas this resolution is to ask the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to take greater responsibility for charter school funding and improve funding equity for low-income districts and districts with large population of high-need students. And whereas under Massachusetts' current funding system, for each student residing in the City of East Hampton who chooses to attend a charter school, almost all the funding from the city for that student follows them to the charter school. And whereas under Massachusetts' current funding system, for each student residing in East Hampton who chooses to attend another public school district, a smaller but significant portion of the public funding from the city for that student follows them to the chosen school district. And whereas the current funding system costs public school districts much more than it saves them by educating fewer students. And whereas when a student leaves a school, the cost to operate that school remains relatively unchanged, making it difficult to proportionally decrease expenses in response to reductions in enrollment. And whereas many of the costs associated with running a school district are fixed costs, including maintenance, utilities, transportation, student services, and benefits negotiated in good faith for public employees. And whereas this results in a downward spiral of budget cuts that perpetuates the loss of students to charter schools and wealthier school districts, and a continued decline in school funding, loss of programming and support staff. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is obligated by its constitution to provide a public education to all its children, rich and poor, in every city and town. And whereas charter schools do not take on the full fiscal responsibility of free and appropriate public education of students with disabilities, emotional, physical, and learning disabilities, and students with those needs are routinely excluded from charter schools. And whereas the current funding system siphons valuable and necessary public funding disproportionately from low-income and moderate-income school districts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council, in cooperation with our municipal partners and the East Hampton School Committee, calls upon the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to correct this inequity by taking long overdue financial responsibility for charter school and school choice assessments for low-income and moderate-income school districts. Be it further resolved, we are calling for the passage of HD four-four-three-nine to increase state aid to the East Hampton Public School District by changing the funding formula for school choice tuition and charter school tuition, and not deducting any funds from state aid for public schools for school choice and charter schools. And be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution to State Representative Omar Gomez, Senator John Vallas, and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion? I just wanna thank the people that brought this forward. I appreciate that. This is, this is important, and I appreciate the people that spoke to us about this. So, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. And um, moving on, we have some communications from elected boards and officials, I believe. Councilor Riley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So first, I just wanna acknowledge, I know we've been here uh for a long time, um, but this is an important uh statement that I'd like to make. The members of the Appointment Committee would like to take a moment tonight to acknowledge the passing of Danny Hartman, a member of our Planning Board. As members of appointments, we view the two hundred or so volunteer public administrators in the City of East Hampton as an integral part of the fabric of Pason Avenue, and Danny was such a bright spot on the Planning Board. He was sworn in on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and in the time of his service to the city, he oversaw some of the most consequential aspects of our city's business and its future. He was a civil engineer with some of the highest qualifications we typically see in public service. His perspectives on structural and environmental engineering were essential to the work of the Planning Board. And qualifications aside, he was a great friend and a partner to everyone who served on the Planning Board, in the Planning Department, and even those of us who've served on the Ordinance Committee. Much of the revitalization everyone enjoys in this city is in large part because of the Planning Board. Every person who's served on the Appointment Committee with me knows that I thank each person who comes before the committee for their dedication to making our government work more effectively and efficiently, and I mean that. We cannot be good stewards of the city without the willingness of so many bright and kind people who serve alongside us across thirty boards, committees, and commissions. Tonight, we would like to go a little bit further and thank Danny's family for sharing his brilliance with us for these last four years. It's so easy for us to forget, at the heart of some two hundred volunteers are two hundred families that may miss someone special at family dinners or concert recitals, or even quiet nights on the couch that are consumed with reading plans, agendas, and thinking about the weight of their decisions on how to best care for the city and its sixteen thousand residents. We can't do this work without any of you. So thank you for your collective sacrifices, and know that our community grieves alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other, uh, Councilor Peak, and then Councilor Jadzik?
I'll do this one real quick.
Okay.
So, uh, there were some people here earlier who were talking about the short-term rentals thing.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna make a quick statement about this, because I've received a handful of constituents reaching out about it. So, uh, and everyone who was here for this, and also the mayor are gone, so I'm going to say this very quickly, because I don't know if anyone's actually gonna hear it. Okay, so, uh, I have some uh issues with Airbnb as a company, and they're well documented. Um, however, uh, the uh, the thing that I think is important, we did pass a tax on short-term rentals in my first term, so it was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, something like that, we did it. Um, so as far as the City Council has been concerned, I think that this has been a use that has been acknowledged in our votes uh as something that exists in the city. So it is our understanding that it's been allowed. Now, um, the Building Commissioner is just doing his job, uh, in his reading. Now, the building commissioner is just doing his job, his reading of the zoning, it's not a use type that is allowed. So he's doing his job in pointing that out and telling people to cease and desist. But I just think that it's important as a council to just note that this is something that we acknowledged and chose to tax, and in choosing to tax, I do think implicitly did say that it's something you're allowed to do. We don't pass taxes on illegal things. So I do think there's something there. So it's something that we, we, we are going to be, I, I also understand that there are some public safety concern, like, as in public safety departments, police, fire, do have some concerns about these operations, and I think it's very smart for us to do legislation on it, and that's something we're going to be submitting. The, the reason I'm making this statement rather than just submitting it is to just say that I hope that, given that understanding, that the city council who makes these rules believed that this was something that is allowed, and that we do intend tonight to begin the process of figuring out what are reasonable restrictions and rules to put on it, that the city could perhaps pause any sort of enforcement of this matter until such time, hopefully in the near future, as we can come up with that. Because I don't, I, I think that when, when this, when we were of the understanding that this is okay, and I think that there was, the people who made investments in these things, whatever my feelings about the company or its impacts might be, like, I believe that they did make those things with the understanding that we were allowing them. And so I think that the fair thing to do would be for the city to not take any enforcement action until we've been able to pass rules that I think we all believed already existed. And that, I think, is the, the fair thing to do, and I, I would ask the ZBA to do the same and to just, just take a beat on this whole thing to let the council do work and not feel rushed in, in doing good work.
I appreciate that, and I just want to say that I did make that sentiment known to the mayor, and pointed out some language that could potentially make things a little less, or potentially allow for a kind of a stop of the cease and desist. So I'm hoping that that, as we sort this out, that that can happen because it's not fair. And so I would fully agree with that.
Yeah.
And I know Counselor Jadzick is, is next, so I'll, I'll just move to that.
Yes, I will also try to keep this brief.
Yeah.
I know, we've been here a long, a long time. I'd just like to share that the East Hampton Cultural Council, which is our local cultural council, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, just announced that they awarded 31 local projects out of a record 70 applications this year. So I think that's just a testament to the amount of talent that we have. We have a very deep well of talent and a thriving arts community here in East Hampton. The projects include everything from guided tours of our cemeteries and our historic cemeteries to nine different unique musical events. There will be five literary happenings, four theatrical programs, all ages experiences, and even our very first cat parade for any cat lovers out there. Most of the, these grants are small, they're about $500 or less, and, but they, they have a very deep meaning to artists and the community members who receive these grants. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that there will be a celebration for the grantees at a public reception in April. The date will be determined, but I'll be sharing that out when that happens, but I'd like to encourage everyone here to attend if possible.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Coniff, were you?
I was just going to reiterate what you said and, you know, have it put in writing to the mayor's that this is our thoughts and feelings, so.
Will be.
Got it.
I can do that. Okay, thank you. And that brings us, we don't have any correspondence. I don't have anything. Counselor Kuzynski, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, let's, and the mayor is left. So let's move on to reports from standing committees and Finance, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week, we discussed some things that we voted on tonight. So we're going to be meeting next week to discuss, well, we have one new interdepartmental transfer, so.
Oh, shoot, I don't, do you have the language for that? I'm sorry. For the first reading of the PEG. I mean, I can, I can probably just guess it from.
It's not PEG access.
It's the PEG access. Oh, okay, PEG is giving us the PEG access.
That's great.
Okay, so I would like to move, so, yeah, so I think we're going to be meeting next week, Wednesday, at 5:30 in Conference Room One, to discuss this item. And then I'd like to make a motion to move this item to Finance and also to set a public hearing for it.
You need to do a first reading.
First reading.
First reading, yes, that's what I'm going to do, I'm just doing the whole thing. So. So, request hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested: $46,120.34 to be transferred from PEG access account to be transferred to PEG access account. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to give approval to spend from the PEG access account receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement. So I'm making a motion to move this to Finance and also set a public hearing for two weeks from now at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Motion passes.
This concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. And we'll move from that to public safety, and Counselor Terrell.
Yes, well, Public Safety Committee has not met since our last meeting. We will however be meeting next Thursday, March 20th, at 6:00 PM in Conference Room One, I believe.
Yep.
If that's open.
We'll see.
I do have one request for a 90-day extension for the traffic and pedestrian safety on West Street.
Okay. We have a motion and a.
In the form of a motion?
In a second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Okay, motion passes.
This concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell. And Appointments, Counselor Riley?
I will be very quick. Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met last night to review two mayoral appointments and one city council presidential appointment. The first order of business concerns the appointment of Samantha Mater to the Board of Health with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2027. I received an email early from her Tuesday afternoon to notify the committee that she was applying for a municipal position within the Health Department and requested a temporary stay on her appointment while the HR process works out. If by the time her appointment process times out, she hasn't heard from the city on an employment opportunity, then we can withdraw her appointment without prejudice. We agreed as a committee that that would be sufficient, so for tonight, we will not be moving her appointment out of our committee. Next was the appointment of Emily Russo to the Retirement Board with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2027. This is a pretty straightforward appointment. The East Hampton Retirement Board has an ex officio seat for the mayor's administration, and this appointment was previously held by Jessica Hebert. Historically, the HR director has been serving in this capacity, so it's merely a process of appointing her to this seat. And then finally, we have Connie Denham as the city council presidential appointee to the B's Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. Like the Retirement Board, the B's Committee has an ex officio seat reserved for a city councillor. The Appointment Committee met with Connie to discuss, discuss her vision on how to best support the B's Committee and how to be a liaison between the city council and the greater volunteer community. So as is customary, I'd like to turn it over to Council President Derby for any remarks on his support for Connie Denham's appointment.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. I, I just wanted to say that Counselor Denham reached out to me with interest to be on the B's Committee, and it sounded like that was a really good fit. And so I appreciate and thank coming forward for that, and I'm fully supportive of that appointment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So, so I'm going to make the, a motion for the two appointees. So I move that the full council appoint Emily Russo to the East Hampton Retirement Board with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2027, and Connie Denham to the B's Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Motion passes. And would you mind moving your new mayoral appointment?
Yes, well, I actually, I have one last thing that I need to say. So in closing, I wanted to notify the full council that we held a reorganization meeting and unanimously appointed Counselor Smith to be the new Chair of Appointments, and that I will fulfill the duties of the clerk. I have so much respect and admiration for Counselor Smith.
Thank you.
And I'm excited to continue the great work of the Appointments Committee under her leadership. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 17th, at 6:00 PM, but is subject to change. I'll be sure to have the new chair communicate any new dates with the council clerk if that should occur.
Thank you.
So I now would like to make a motion to, sorry, I'm scrolling, here we go. To move the mayoral appointment to the Appointment Committee.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Motion passes, thank you, Counselor Riley. And that concludes.
Yes, it does, yes.
Ordinance, Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. We haven't met since our last meeting. We attempted to, but just we had a couple of conflicts. So we are, I, we have a couple of meetings, and I'm going to explain this. On March 11th, Tuesday, we're going to have a meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And at that particular meeting, we are going to discuss several of the items on the agenda, including the new item dealing with the short-term rentals. So from 5:00 to 6:00, much of our conversation is going to be regarding the short-term rentals. So we're asking those who want to speak or want to participate in that to come to that particular meeting, either online or in person. We will be in Conference Room B, which is small. So, you know, that's why we're asking folks, if you, if that's not what you're there for, to please, wait. Because then, at 6:00, from 6:00 to 7:00, we're going to have another meeting, and at that meeting, we are going to discuss the, the housing partnerships recommendations for around zoning ordinance changes. So at that meeting, from 6:00 to 7:00, we'll be discussing that item. Again, the rooms are, the room's very small, so we've split these out so that we can try to accommodate individual needs, et cetera. So please, please be respectful of, of that particular need. We do have a couple of items that need 90-day, a few items that need 90-day extensions. That's the request to review residency requirements for membership on committees, review of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership zoning ordinance recommendations, as well as the amendment to Chapter Eight to add a new section, 8-26, East Hampton's strawberry ordinance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend those three items for 90 days, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Motion passes.
And I'd like to move the request to review zoning ordinance amendments regarding short-term rentals to the Ordinance Committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any no's or abstentions? Motion passes.
And that's everything that our committee has to offer the council this evening.
Did I, did I miss the city ordinance amendments extension?
We did that all three together.
We did that together. So we did the request, the review, and the amendments. Thank you, I missed that.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Denham. Property.
Property has now a full complement of, of people.
Yes.
Since we had our new person appointed to the committee, Counselor Coniff. So thank you, we'd like to request 90-day extension for the matter of regarding flags on public property.
Second. We have a motion and a second to request for 90 days the flags on public property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Motion passes, thank you.
This concludes property.
Okay, how about rules and government relations?
Rules and government relations has, is a waiting word from the city attorney with regard to the mayor's compensation amendment, home rule amendment request, and I'd liken a 90-day extension for that. At this time, I would request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
No's, abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you, this concludes.
Oh, and I, thank you, Counselor Kuzynski. I don't believe we have any old business, I believe we moved all of our new business. Apologize for my flub-ups tonight, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. No, did I miss something again?
I wanted to make one, one note.
Okay.
Is this really the next to the last meeting?
Next to the last.
Oh, jeez.
Just wanted to, wanted to remind everybody of that sober moment.
We're so happy we can make it long for.
Thank you, we're like, not looking like next week is super long.
Yeah, right.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
Don't please.
We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.